Good evening. So this is the special meeting prior to the regular meeting, which will start at 7:00 of the Fairfax Town Council. And we are here to interview an applicant for the Fairfax Open Space Committee. And we'll take roll call really quickly. And then after that, we'll do the interview and then we'll open the regular meeting with the rest of our beginning of the meeting protocols. So Michelle, town clerk, if you would not mind doing the roll call.
I'd be happy to, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Goddard.
I'm here.
Councilmember Kohler.
Here.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Here.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yeah.
And Mayor Ackerman, all present, thank you.
I'm here. Okay. So if the interviewee is here.
She is.
That would be Heather.
And I am asking her to unmute herself there. And would you like to be on camera, Heather? Are you comfortable with that?
Yes, I'm fine with that.
Okay, then I'm going to do that right now. Let's see. You're being promoted as to a panelist, is what it's called. There.
Hello.
There you are.
Hi, I'm Heather.
Good evening, Heather. Thank you for applying.
Oh, yes, I'm really excited to be a part of it.
So yeah, we just have a few minutes here to do this. And what we usually like to do is to start out by just letting you say whatever you'd like. We've read your application. So anything that you'd like to add or elaborate on or restate, just anything in your own words.
Sure, I've been living in Fairfax. I started living here originally in 1992. And then I have moved away and then come back. But I've lived here consistently for the last 20 years. And I have been a part of the community. And I've worked locally as well. And now I am a professor at San Jose State University in recreation and leisure and public health. And my focus is there. And the focus of my master's program was ecotourism and sustainable tourism. So nature and open space is really important to me. And so I really like to make a difference in the community here that I've been a part of for over 20 years.
Thank you. So we often have at least a couple of council members ask any questions that we'd like to ask of you, if any of the council members would like to.
My name. Mine is super quick, and I'm going to let my colleagues ask you questions of more substance. But does your last name mean with pleasure?
That's correct, yes.
Awesome.
It's my husband's name, and I had to take it.
You're hired.
We'll go with that. Any other questions from?
Were you able to sit in on a meeting or two for Open Space?
Yes, I did sit on one a couple of years ago. And then I was, then I just acquired my position at San Jose State, like basically right after that. And then now that I've been there for a while, I talked to Susan Pascal Baron, who is my neighbor as well. And I decided, hey, I can really, you know, make that commitment now because I, you know, I've been at San Jose State for a couple of years now. So yeah, so then I sat in on another meeting.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have a question. Thanks for applying, Heather. I was on Open Space before being on the council, as was councilmember Cutrano. And what? Do you have a specific idea of something you'd like to do as part of the Open Space Committee? I mean, it's a pretty fun one to be on, as well as doing good work.
Yeah, well, thank you for that question. Yes, I actually, you know, I have a lot of ideas, of course. And one thing that I actually talked about in the, I sat in on the last meeting with them, and they were talking about different ways to get the community interested in open space and our open space that we are so privileged to have here in Fairfax and the surrounding area. And I would love to get on board and figure out, you know, different ways. I have a lot of ideas about how to get the public, you know, involved and invigorated in learning about public open space. So thanks.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for applying, Heather. And I just was really blown away by your application and hearing that your master's work was in ecotourism. It's excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. I wish I could also apply for the Recreation Committee, but apparently I have to be in Fairfax Town, and I'm up on Oak Manor.
So yeah, the Open Space Committee is one that we changed several years ago to, because open space fits so many areas that are adjacent, and our open space map includes beyond the confines of Fairfax, we were able to change it to allow folks that are in unincorporated Fairfax to be members. So it's a good fit, and I think it's good to get your feet wet.
Definitely. Well, yes, thanks so much for your consideration and for this opportunity.
Nice to meet you, Heather.
Yeah, I just wanted to also say, Heather, I was on the Open Space Committee when you came to the meeting in 2019. And your energy was so contagious, and I know you had some things to do. And I was so excited to see that you are back and applied, and I think you're going to be fantastic. So thanks for stepping up again.
Yes, and I remember you as well. And I'm excited to be here, hopefully make a difference.
Yeah. Well, I'll just comment that I was very excited about your application, and it's great to meet you. I'd like to hear you pronounce that beautiful last name.
It's Heather DePlacer.
Okay, thank you. And yeah, I just, I really appreciate the focus that you are bringing to the sustainability of the open space. That's very important, and I'm interested to hear how that goes and how your ideas play out in that area, because that is a very big part of open space. It's not only a matter of acquiring it, it's a matter of how we take care of it.
So. Yes, exactly, exactly, yes.
And we do have ecotourism in Fairfax for sure. Among other things, we have the bicyclists. So there are a lot of people who come to Fairfax to recreate, and the sustainability of that whole process is certainly something that's good to focus on.
Yes, I mean, there's definitely a lot of opportunities there, you know, for sustainability and creating that kind of pathway for our town.
Well, unless you have any closing thoughts, I would entertain a motion.
I think we need to go to public comment.
Oh, yeah, that's right, yes, sorry about that. So we'll open public comment for, on this, on this one topic. And Michelle, could you bring people in?
Sure. I see that Susan Pascal Baron has her hand raised. So Susan, can you unmute yourself?
I've unmuted, hello? Oh, good. You never know. Yeah, I just wanted to chime in and say that I'm super happy that Heather DePlacer is on board. She, each time she came to the meeting, she had a lot to contribute. She's got great resources, and she's going to make, she's going to be a force to be reckoned with, so watch out. Anyway, so yes, we're all very excited that she is applying.
Thank you, Susan. Michelle, is there anyone else? Michelle, do we have?
Maybe you couldn't hear me. There is nobody, there are no other hands raised.
Okay, yeah, Michelle is having some on and off audio issues that aren't quite debugged. Okay, so we'll close public comment on that. And council members, I would entertain a motion on appointing Heather to the Open Space Committee.
Well, I will move to appoint Heather DePlacer to the Open Space Committee.
A second.
All right. And I'll take a roll call vote on that. Councilmember Kohler.
Hi.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Hi.
Councilmember Goddard.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Hi.
And I vote enthusiastic I as well. Okay, congratulations and thank you, Heather. We'll see more.
Thank you so much. I'm humbled by this opportunity, so thank you. And I'll look forward to connecting with you all in the future.
Congrats and thank you.
Yes, do so anytime.
Great, well, have a great night. It was nice to meet you all.
Yeah. Okay, and with that, we will close the special meeting. And in just a few minutes at 7:00 PM, we'll open the regular meeting. We are now opening the calling to order, the regular meeting of the Fairfax Town Council for February 3, 2021. And we've already taken a roll call during the special meeting which preceded this. All the council members are present. So first, we can do the approval of agenda and affidavit of posting. Does anybody have any suggestions for changing the agenda at this early stage in the meeting? Hearing none? Do we have a motion for the approval of the agenda and affidavit of posting?
I move to approve the agenda as is.
Second.
Okay, that's motion by Hellman and second by Kohler. And Michelle, would you like to take a roll call vote on that?
I'd be happy to. Is my mic working?
Yes, it is.
Oh, good. Okay. Can I just clarify that you're also approving the affidavit of posting?
Yes, that was included in the motion.
Thank you. Councilmember Goddard.
Hi.
Councilmember Kohler.
Hi, Michelle, you're fading out.
Okay, sorry, I haven't moved, but councilmember Cutrano.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Hi.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Hi.
All ayes, thank you.
Okay. And I will read the land acknowledgement. The Fairfax Town Council acknowledges that we are located on the unceded ancestral lands of the Coast Miwok people of present day Marin County. We honor with gratitude the land itself and all of its ancestors, past, present, and And the meeting protocol, which I will read, the mayor shall maintain order at the meetings. The council and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and are ridiculing the character or motives of councilmembers, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. The town council will review the agenda at 10:00 PM to ascertain which items, if any, will be continued to another meeting. And any matter not started by 11:30 PM will be continued to an adjourned or regular council meeting unless the council votes to suspend this rule. Okay, and we have a few announcements. There, a countywide community forum, this is not only for Fairfax, but it's about an event in Fairfax, will be co-sponsored by the Marin County District Attorney Lori Fergoli and Patrice O'Neal, founder of Not in Our Town, to address the recent incident involving acts of hate. And that will be February 4 at 5:00 PM. Virtual, of course, you can find it on the Fairfax Town calendar. The Fairfax Community Listening Session about the possible renaming of Sir Francis Drake will be this Saturday, February 6, from 10:00 AM to noon. And there are vacancies on boards and commissions. You can find information and applications on the town website. Planning Commission has one vacancy. Climate Action Committee has up to three vacancies. And the Open Space Committee, Michelle, would that be amended now to one vacancy or still two?
That is one vacancy. And I neglected to put the volunteer board also has a vacancy right now.
Okay, so you all heard that the volunteer board has one vacancy, Open Space has one vacancy. Fairfax Food Pantry continues to be open Saturdays, 8:30 to 10:30 AM at the Fairfax Community Church, 2398 Sir Francis Drake Boulevard. And they do a fantastic job. Make available, make yourself available if you can help and make yourself there if you would, if you need help or would like help. And to receive town agendas, newsletters, and updates by email, you can go to the town website, townoffairfax.org, and subscribe, and you'll get agendas for the council and planning commission meetings and other announcements. Okay, oh, and I forgot, I'm sorry. The thing that I most wanted to say tonight was that we would like to open this meeting in memory of Jay Simo, who recently passed away. And we will, I know that people will be wanting to speak at the Open Space, and so, I mean, at the open time. And so we will, we will go into open time and just looking to see, yes. And so.
Mayor.
Believe that, yes.
I have a quick announcement, if I may.
Okay, yeah.
I just wanted to announce, if the community wasn't aware, we have a questionnaire concerning the Cascade striping effort. So if you live in that neighborhood in particular, we would like to hear from you. We really want your feedback. We're looking to put closure on this matter at the next council meeting, which is two weeks from today. It's on our website. We've posted it on Nextdoor, the link, as well as on Facebook. So if you can't find it, you can write to our town clerk, Michelle Gardner, or any of us, we can point you to how to find it. But we really do want to hear from the largest sample as possible. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. So I believe at this time, it is time for the open time for public expression, which is a time to address the council on matters that aren't on the rest of the agenda. So for any topics that are on the agenda tonight, you'll be able to speak because we'll always have a public expression period for those. So this is for matters that aren't on the agenda. And with that, Michelle, if you could open up the open time?
I see that John Reed is, has his hand up. I'd like to call on John, former councilmember. John, I've unmuted you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, good evening, John.
Great, good evening, council. And thanks for doing what you're doing. It's a difficult job. And I would like, I don't know, I might be able to keep it to three minutes, but actually, being a member of the Walk in the Park Players, perhaps I can represent that group, I don't know, if necessary. I guess Jay, that is a theater group that Jay Simo created a couple decades ago. And it's called Walk in the Park Players because basically he put a lot of plays on in Belinas Park and in the Creek Bed with one of them. And I was a part of some of those productions. And Jay Simo is a friend of mine, one, I think, one of my good best friends, actually. And so I think, well, I've written something because that's easier to do. But Jay was probably known in different ways to different people in the community. You could see him riding his bike around, you could see him interacting with kids at, you know, local cafes and things like that, as well as doing theater. Let me see, he did a lot of these things. He was working on future stuff. Thomas Morton project, a Pied Piper of Hamlin puppet show, things like that. But let me see, I guess on Tuesday, January 19, in a major windstorm that we had a couple weeks back, a 210-foot Douglas fir tree was blown over. And this critically injured Jay Simo, and he was a beloved fixture, figure in Fairfax or fixture, you could call it both. He passed about eight days later, never regaining consciousness on January 27. And he left behind many grieving people in our community. He directed many theater productions in Fairfax, four different productions of Midsummer Night's Dream over the years, Lysistrata, To Kill a Mockingbird, Toad of Toad Hall, and several others that aren't written down here. Many of these involve children in our community, as indeed Jay was always entertaining kids. He lived to make kids of all ages happy. Balancing chairs on his nose or rolling a hat down his arm, flipping it with his shoulder onto his head were practiced skills in his routine. His plays were no different, but invariably, they also served to encourage latent talents in the community, bringing people together to create theater that celebrated the best qualities of human nature. He lived in Fairfax for decades, leaving occasionally for less expensive places like Sebastopol or Silver City, Nevada, but always coming back. A loving community here supported Jay as he supported many of the better qualities in our community. He gave us not only good community theater, but also a human love of life, best seen through the eyes of children, especially that child that lives within us all. Rest in peace, Jay, and thank you for the gifts you have left behind. Let us never forget the vitality, the joy, and yes, also the outrage at the selfishness that you saw in the world. Jay showed us that joy was at the heart of a life well-lived. So long-lived Jay Simo. And there are, has been interest shown by some in the community to put the screenplays of the Pied Piper to Hamlin, of Hamlin together as a puppet show together, which was an unfinished project of his, as well as a story about Thomas Morton that's in screenplay form. And people could contact me if they want to know more about that. And so thank you very much, and long live Jay, in spirit. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, John.
The next, yes, mayor, sorry.
Yes, yes, we can continue with public comment. And if council members have anything to add, pipe in at any point. So Michelle, would you call the next person then?
Yes. The next person is a phone caller whose phone number ends in 533. I have unmuted you. You may need to unmute your phone. The telephone ends in 533?
Yes.
We can hear you.
This is Jonathan Medrick, an owner and operator of Jonathan's Leather Craft at 42 Belinas Road. Been here for 29 years making leather craft. I'm concerned about the potential location of a temporary skate and scooter park across the street from my home on Backstreet.
I'm sorry to say, but that's, this is the open time for items not on the agenda.
Oh, I didn't know, sorry. So you want to put me back on hold?
Yeah, and that's actually on the consent counter, which will be next. And no, I'm sorry, it's later in the meeting, so it's item.
Number five.
It is on the consent counter then. So that's a status report, but if you wanted to speak at that time, that's when we would. Thank you, thank you, John, and we'll see you.
Okay, just put me back on hold and let me know when it's my time.
Okay. Thanks. Michelle?
Okay, yes, I have done that, thank you. The next speaker is Norma Fregoso, and you are unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. This is my first opportunity to speak to town council, to thank the council members who supported and approved the Victory Village Senior Housing Project. It is one of the finest housing developments in all of Fairfax. A great design, very well situated on the site, and captures every drop of water that comes to it or through it or produced by it, and it's 100% affordable. I don't know if people realize just what a remarkable feat and accomplishment that has been, and no doubt it is increasing adjacent property values significantly. I just hope it doesn't take another 10 years to entitle another such project for our community. Thank you again very much.
Thank you, Norma. Good to hear from you.
The next speaker is Elias Karkabi. I've unmuted you.
Hi. Good evening, can everyone hear me?
Good evening, Elias, yes, we can.
Well, I want to start by saying I was very saddened to hear about Jay's passing. He was a staple of the community for my entire life, living here. So he will be, he will be missed. But I do have a comment that I'm calling in for right now, and it's about the ResJ Committee and the fact that the ResJ Committee will be on a panel tomorrow with the ADL. So I'd like to read a comment. In their open letter shared to the public, "The movement for Black Lives, Code Pink, and the Jewish Voice for Peace, and more than 100 other major social justice groups in the United States, all condemned the ADL's history and ongoing pattern of attacking social justice movements led by communities of color, queer people, immigrants, Muslims, Arabs, and other marginalized groups. The ADL does all that while aligning itself with police, right-wing leaders, and perpetrators of state violence. The ADL needs to be held accountable. Their presence on a public social justice forum functions to legitimize their complicity in oppression, colonialism, and apartheid. Now, I understand that folks might not be too familiar with the ADL's background, but the town of Fairfax recently passed a resolution to affirm that Black Lives Matter. Now is a chance for the town to stand up and continue that resolution and not go..." and continue that resolution and not go back on it. So a reminder, the Movement for Black Lives, which is the Black Lives Matter movement, a coalition of more than 50 groups representing the interests of Black communities across the United States, has called for activists to cut ties with the Anti-Defamation League. I hope that when the ResJ members are on the panel tomorrow with Lori Fregoli, they don't give the ADL a free pass. That would be against the resolution standing up for the Black Lives Matter movement." If they did that, so, thank you.
Thank you, Elias.
The next speaker is Larry Bragman. Larry, you're unmuted.
Good evening, Larry. You might need to unmute yourself.
Here we go. Hi, everybody. Just wanted to follow up on John's comments about Jay, which were so moving, but I actually hung out with Jay a couple nights before it happened. And we just hung out, split a couple beers, didn't finish the second one. And then I heard what happened. And that night, I was telling Holly, you know, just shaking my head and opened the fridge. And there was the half beer that was left from our little hangout. And I uncorked it and sure enough, it was still good, you know? And I just think in some ways that's Jay, you know, the effervescence is still there. And what he did and the people he touched, you know, that's his legacy. And it's a great one. It's just a great one, you know? And, you know, there's tragic lives, there's comic lives. You know, comedy is defined as the hero attains success. And I think Jay's life was a success. And we hope to continue his legacy. So I just wanted to chime in. I know there's a lot of people that have photos and video. And I know his family and his friends and admirers want to sort of gather that legacy together. So if anybody in the community has photos, video, anything like that, if they could send it on to one of the council members or to John Reed or me, we'll make sure it's posted and becomes part of that legacy. So, you know, I mean, it's it's kind of hard to fathom, but we were all lucky to know Jay. And we just do our best to follow in his footsteps. So thank you, thanks a lot, everybody.
Thank you so much, Laurie.
The next speaker is, next is Morgan Hall. Morgan, you're unmuted.
Okay, hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. I'm Morgan Hall, I live on Walsh Lane here in Fairfax. And I've been representing a group of the neighbors here opposing a monster house that's being proposed by a developer. Walsh Lane is a one-block-long cul-de-sac, 10 feet wide. And the house that's being proposed is twice as big as any of the houses here. It's twice as tall. The proposal is for five bedrooms. The houses here have two to three bedrooms. We've been met by nothing but the town playing hardball. We went before the town council on December 6th, there was a tie vote. The town attorney advised the town council what happens in a tie vote, and the town council voted. However, the advice that the town attorney gave the town council was wrong. And the result of that vote was that our appeal was approved. So now the town attorney has made it clear that she is going to ignore this fact, going to contest the validity of this vote and basically approve or disapprove our appeal arbitrarily. That we don't feel that that's right at all. And the only way that we can do anything about it is by suing the town. To file a lawsuit against the town on this matter will cost us somewhere between $50,000 and $100,000. And, you know, we're a group of neighbors up here on Walsh Lane. We're largely a number of seniors, we don't, we can't afford that kind of thing. And yet, the town is pretty much forcing us to do it. So I'm just just saying that as somebody who's been on the planning commission, who cares a lot about this town, who's done a number of things for the town, I just think there's something rotten in Denmark. Thank you.
Thank you, Morgan. We wish that something could be worked out there with the neighbors. I hope we don't come to that, as you speak of. Michelle?
The next speaker is Walt Vernon. I've unmuted you. Walt, you may have to unmute yourself.
Yep, 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 sorry, thank you. This will be quick, I just wanted to say that the Climate Action Committee will be hosting a public meeting on Monday night. We are nearing completion of our climate action plan. And we want to encourage everybody from the town to participate and to help us craft the vision for the next 10 years. So there's a Zoom link on our website and on the town's website. And we hope to see you there, so thank you.
Thank you, Walt.
The next speaker is Mallory Geithheim. You're unmuted, Mallory. Mallory?
Can you hear me now?
Now, yes.
Okay. I was just listening to what Morgan has to say. And it's not just about this situation. It's about what happens with the town council and the planning commission and what is happening with Fairfax. For you, Bruce, to say, I wish something can be worked out with the neighbors, it's not, it's not, it doesn't mean anything. What are you guys going to do? What is the lawyer going to do? What is the town, the planning commission going to do? A five, a house that's five bedrooms and twice as big as everything is the problem of what's going on in Fairfax now. We are just turning into Mill Valley, and I don't particularly care for that. And many people I know, they don't care for that. And I don't know how this thing got, as far as it did with maybe the wrong information from the lawyer, but somebody needs to take responsibility for this. Because this town is going to, you know, I'm not going to use that word, but it is. And I think, I think people really need to get it together and be on the same page about what they want this town to be doing and what they want it to look like and what they want it to feel like. And putting a bigger, a twice as big house on a small lane is just indicative of what's going on in Fairfax. And I am personally against it. And I would like something more than wishing it can be worked out with the neighbors, unquote. You guys do something about it, you're the town council. So stand up and stand up for the big developers, which I don't think is happening very much or enough at all. That's it, thank you.
The next speaker is Pam Mix. I've unmuted you, Pam. Pam, you have to unmute yourself now.
Sorry. Good evening, everybody. I am so sad about losing Jay Simo. He is, you know, one of the heart and souls of Fairfax that really made Fairfax be Fairfax. Such a big heart, just one of a kind. And always, every time I met him on the street, he had this great twinkle in his eye, if you all know what I mean. But I'm so sad, and I hope we can get together in some way to remember him. Secondly, I want to respond to Morgan. And being the former planning chair, planning commissioner chair, that vote was not taken right. And the attorney is wrong. I've been in a couple of those votes, they're difficult, but the attorney did not follow the policy and the ordinance. And it's clear, but I don't think she knew that. So my suggestion is to evaluate your attorney. And if, you know, that's all I can say at this point. How was that?
Okay, well, thank you, Pam.
Mr. Mayor, I do not see any other speakers at this time. Oh, never mind, I do. Sorry. And the next speaker is Joe McGary.
Good evening, council. Yeah, I just want to echo the sentiments around the huge loss of Jay Simo and just such a special, unique spirit in our town. And the town will be different without him. And yeah, just very sad, very sad. I wanted to comment on some troubling statistics that have been, that have been, come out of the Marin County District Attorney's Office in regards to racial identity tracking across the county for all the law enforcement agencies in regards to all cases from those agencies that were referred to the district attorney. And through a Public Records Act request, the data's been provided. And the town of Fairfax, what's been revealed is that the Black people in Fairfax are five times as likely as white people to be arrested and have their cases referred to the district attorney. And for Latinx folks in Fairfax, it's two times as likely. So that's a lot, that's a lot to digest. And we're starting to get some of the data on racial identity related to arrests. And we need to start to look at what's going on and how the institution of policing is affecting the way that the Fairfax Police Department is policing different groups differently. And something else that came out of the DA was that, the DA's report was that this racial identity information is provided by the law enforcement agencies. So Fairfax PD has that. And so in 2020, the cases that were referred to the district attorney's office were 30. But that still leaves, there's 132 other felony misdemeanor, felony and misdemeanor arrests that Fairfax PD has the data on. And that includes 50 felony and misdemeanor citations. And we need, that data needs to be shared. The racial identity of those felony and misdemeanor arrests and citations needs to be shared and put up on the town website. And I asked one of you council members to work with Chief Tabaranza and provide some transparency. We've been promised transparency all summer long, and it's incredibly disappointing that the police department held back on this information when it's been solicited. And in the spirit of working together, it's data that should have been shared by now. And it needs to be shared right away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe.
The next speaker is Mark Bell. Mark, I've unmuted you.
Hi, it's going to be two of us speaking, Ling Shen's going to go first.
Hi, Ling Shen Bell. On 660 Dominga, I just wanted to continue on what Mallory and Pam were saying about the situation in Walsh Lane. It seems to me that if the attorney gave wrong information on how to deal with the appeal, then that case needs to be reopened and it needs to be dealt with in the proper way. It seems really obvious to me that it's not valid and that the council needs to readdress that in the proper way. So, thank you.
Okay, and then can I have three minutes, please, Michelle? Thank you. So I don't hear anything about the irrigation system going in for the redwood trees in the park. And what I do hear is that the town doesn't have any money to do that. However, if you look at what the town expenditures are, we're looking at $116,000 for two place structures to go, I guess now into a desert because those trees are going to die. We had seven years of supposed planning for the parcade from that grant. So how much money there was lost by waiting seven years just from devaluation and from increased building? We spent $75,000, I believe, I'm still waiting to hear a figure on the bus shelter, which I've never heard what it costs to be finished. So $75,000 for a bus shelter because it was refused to have any work done for over a decade on the existing bus shelter. So then we have, in this parcade, to put in the bus shelter, it was not even part of the plan after seven years. So then you had to hire the crew to go back in and rip up the new concrete, et cetera, and asphalt that they had just laid so that they could then go back and relay footings. How much was that? Let's look at Cascade Striping. We were told it wasn't costing us anything, but the real figure is something around $30,000, of which a good percentage of that goes to a former colleague of Garrett Toys from a different town. I think that figure was budgeted at $15,000. I guess you can't do an irrigation system for $15,000, or can you? Now, we're looking at not only having a town administrator, but having a town manager. What's that going to cost? Amazing, there's no, doesn't seem to be a problem finding funds for that. We have a ResJ Committee, which, from the times that I've looked at it, seems like the people who are on it are very knowledgeable and really don't need a facilitator. That's $360 an hour that we wouldn't have to pay. You would think that some of that money saved could go to put in an irrigation system for redwood trees in the park, which is the town's responsibility. So when you say there's no money, what you're saying is there's no money because you don't think redwood trees are worth it and that it gets in the way of your little pet projects that you keep dumping onto the town using our tax money. That's my five seconds, I'll leave it to you.
Thank you, Mark. Michelle, do we have any other speakers?
No, we do not, thank you.
Okay, so I will bring it back to the council. Thank you for all that comment at open time. And we'll look at the consent calendar, how, here, we have three, eight, eight items on the consent calendar. And can we? And um, can we? Um, I'm sorry, do we get a staff report beginning on the consent calendar? We don't. So if council members want to ask any questions about the consent calendar or possibly pull any items, then we'll go to public comment on that. Stephanie? You're muted.
I'd like to pull number five, please.
Five. Okay, that would be the status report on the temporary skate park. Any other adjustments to the consent calendar proposed?
Mayor, just for clarification, if we pull these items, do they go to the bottom of the current agenda? Or when do we address those?
That is what we usually do. Um, I think we could control that, but that, that is our usual protocol is the consent items go to the end of the agenda.
Um, with a motion to put it at the top of the agenda. I don't think it's gonna.
Let me just check with Garrett on this. Oh, you're gonna say something?
Well, why don't, go ahead and sort this out and then I'll make my comment.
So Garrett, I know it's normal protocol to put things that are pulled from consent at the end of the agenda. Is that?
It's typically up just to the council. I mean,
Yeah.
firmly in the past, if you took an item from consent and you knew there's a bunch of people in the audience who wanted to talk about it. Sometimes you put that first thing on the regular agenda. Uh, it could be that Vice Mayor Hellman just has a couple of things to raise, in which case might be fairly quick, but it's completely at the discretion of the council.
Okay. And just to clarify, this is a status report. We can have public, we can hear public comment on it, whether it's on the consent calendar or not, but it's a status report, not a, a, an action item at this point tonight.
That's correct, but once we pull it, we, we can hear from the public.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, you can hear from.
You can hear from the public in any case, because there's an, there's a public comment period on the consent calendar in which the public can speak to.
True, very true.
Just a, can I ask a clarifying question about pulling it? Um, if there's just some items to add to it, um, can we just have that? Because we did spend, I think about two and three quarter hours last meeting on the skate park. And then we are gonna have it on the regular agenda for the 17th. I'm just wondering if we just need to add some information.
I'd like to walk through the updates so there, it's very clear to the public and the council. We don't have any surprises two weeks from tonight.
I would support that.
Thank you, Renee.
Okay, so it sounds like it could be fairly brief, just walking through the update. Is that your expectation? Because I, I understand, as Barbara says, we've got other items on the agenda, one of which has actually been continued three times. So there are some things that would be good to get to tonight.
I'll make it quick.
Okay.
And, and if, if I may, on a, on a separate note, um, I, I wanted to ask the council about something on, uh, item seven. And was hoping to, um, discuss that.
Okay, um, if you just have a question for staff on item seven, you could just, it can stay on consent and you could ask the question. We can still discuss things on the consent calendar briefly, but if it's just gonna be a longer discussion, then we should pull it. What's your, uh, your, your pleasure on that?
Um, it's, it might be longer. It might, uh, do we discuss these things after public open or, uh, public comment on the consent, or do we discuss these things?
We, if it's pretty much just a question for staff to clarify, then we do that before we get uh, public discussion, because that helps the public as well to just get the clarification. If it's actually discussing it to make a decision, then that, if, if that's what we need to do, we probably should pull it, but for normal items, we ask questions, then we get the public input, then we discuss it and make decisions. So.
Yeah, I'm happy to, uh, happy to raise the question now. Uh, I think it might be a, a longer discussion, honestly.
You know, actually, um, I have a similar sort of uh, quandary and question on item number seven, so I might recommend that we actually pull it and put it at the end of the agenda so that we could have a brief discussion.
Okay.
That would be my, my request.
Okay, so if there, if those are the only ones that are under consideration, um, maybe we would hear a motion to.
Motion to pull item five and item seven from the consent?
Yeah, and before we do that, um, might I make a brief comment? I don't need to pull anything on number four. Um, it's with great pleasure that we consider the, um, that we consider the new job classification uh, for our deputy town clerk. Um, and I just want to make sure, um, that uh, it is known that I do support the administrative leave um, uh, compensation for the marketing and communications specialist. But I want to make sure that we revisit, um, the, the, the role of our communications specialist and uh, look at the, um, the staffing levels that I believe um, are, are important in our communications division, department, um, moving forward. So, um, I think it needs a more, um, a more robust discussion in terms of the town's communications needs. So by doing this and granting this, um, this, uh, extra compensation, um, I don't want that to be the, uh, end of the, of the discussion on our communications, uh, specialist.
I agree. Thank you, Renee.
Just for the record.
All right.
That I, I support moving forward, uh, moving that item forward on consent.
So can we get a motion to, uh, it sounds like move item five and seven, one to somewhere early in the agenda and item seven to the end?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make that motion.
And where would we want to put item five? We could, we've got a public hearing, which should be pretty quick. And then on the regular agenda, the disaster preparedness committee, that's the thing that we've continued three times.
We just do it at the beginning, Bruce, because I know a lot of the people on the line are like Jonathan, who's been waiting, for example.
Yeah, I, I would support, um, moving it to just prior to the, um, just prior to the regular agenda, so making it the first item on the regular agenda.
Before item nine, before the public hearing.
Get through the public hearing and make it, uh, it, make it, see here, just before item 11.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, so is that a motion?
Uh, yes. Do you want to add that to your motion?
Sure, I'm happy to take that friendly amendment.
Second.
Second, okay. And roll call vote really quickly, um, council member Kohler.
Hi.
Council member Cutrano.
Hi.
Council member Goddard.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And I vote aye as well. So that's item five moving after item nine and before item 11, because item 10 is continued. And then, um, item seven is moved to the end of the meeting after item 14. Okay, so if there are no other questions about consent, then we'll go to public comment and this will be public comment on any of the remaining items on the consent calendar. So, um, sorry to Jonathan that, once again, this isn't the time to comment on this gate part. That'll be coming up soon.
So one through four or six on the, or eight on the consent?
Yeah.
There is a comment that is Mark Bell, so Mark Bell, I've unmuted you.
Thank you, Michelle.
Welcome.
So I'm looking at, uh, items three and four. And it seems to me that if you're establishing a salary range on a change of position, then that's going to increase someone's salary. I'm not sure about what the specifics are, the special administrative leave, et cetera. However, what I'm looking at is more money going while you continue to ignore the arborist who you all love and virtually put him on a pellet pedestal right just below God. And he's told you what you need to do for the life and health of the redwoods and you continue to ignore it. So I would like to hear in full detail how much money we will not be putting into the redwoods and instead redirecting it to an additional position where one might think that if you have a town manager making, uh, excuse me, a town administrator making 250,000 or so a year, that he could handle whatever, but I guess that's really not the case. So anyway, uh, maybe that's a different discussion. However, I think we should be looking at pulling three and four. And, uh, I'd love to hear the reasons why that's more important than redwood trees that are part of this town and have been here and would continue to be here if somebody listened to the arborist and took care of them. Okay, I'll leave with a minute 24 left.
Thank you, Mark. Michelle, do we have any other comment on the consent calendar?
Well, we still have Jonathan's hand raised, but we're, um, you'd explain that that will be heard later.
But it'll be soon, coming up pretty soon. So with that, is that, uh, are we ready to close the public comment on the consent?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. We'll do that. And, um, do we have any further discussion or motion on adopting the consent calendar items? Uh, with, that's one through eight, but with the exception of item five and item seven.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar items one, two, three, four, six, and eight.
I'll second.
Second, okay.
Oh.
Yes.
I'm sorry, with the friendly amendment that we note that we would return to item four and make sure that the uh, communication specialist position is discussed in, uh, in budget session and, uh, also at the, uh, council retreat.
Yeah, that seems like a good place to.
I, that's, I think that's direction. I don't think that's actually part of the.
Yeah, I don't think it's, um, not that I don't want to accept a friendly amendment, but that's, um, I think you're just giving directions to staff to do that. So can we leave the motion as is? And then you've given directions to staff?
That's fine. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, that's clear.
So are you seconding?
I'm seconding.
We have a motion and a second. Um, Michelle, would you please take the roll call vote on this?
Yes, Mayor. Um, council member Goddard.
Uh, yes.
Council member Kohler.
Yes.
Council member Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes.
Thank you. That's all ayes.
Can I just, um, sorry, Mayor, I just, a note, there were, uh, there was a supplement for at least item two. And my motion included
That's right.
So I, I don't think we need to clarify that, but I forgot to mention that.
Right, that was a correction to the minutes that council member Kohler caught and would put into a supplement. Thank you for that. Okay, so item nine is a public hearing to introduce and read by title only an ordinance that adds section 15.04.06.5 electric vehicle charging stations um, to our chapter 1504 construction codes. And, uh, Garrett, if you can give a report on that item?
Sure. So as background, in 2017, the council actually adopted ordinance 811 uh, to reflect state law, which was to, I mean, to create a process to streamline the process for administrative approvals for electric vehicle charging stations, uh, really over the counter building permit or something like that. Um, what we discovered unfortunately is that when we updated the building code in December 2019 uh, to adopt the current building code, we inadvertently deleted ordinance 811. So what's before you tonight is really a revised version of ordinance 811 and we added two changes. And the two changes were based on suggestions from the CAC, the Climate Action Committee, that indicated that the state scorecard said that, um, we're deficient in two areas, not meaning we're not in compliance, just we're deficient in two areas according to skate, the scorecard, which is you need to approve, limit the approvals to health and safety review and charging station approvals aren't subject to association approvals. Association bringing, being things like HOAs. So what we did was we added in those two provisions. Otherwise, we kept the ordinance exactly, uh, all the other language and provisions are the same as what you adopted in 2017. If you introduce it tonight, we'll come back with the second reading at your March 3rd meeting. So that concludes the staff report. Available for questions.
Any questions? I have one quick, quick question. Um, the, just to, uh, verify, I, I believe this is the case that the town still does not charge a fee for pulling the permit to install an electric vehicle charging station in, in the residence?
Hey, if, yeah, we didn't, we didn't change that, so if that was what we did, yeah.
That's, that's not in the code. That's just in our fee schedule.
Yeah.
Anyway, I just wanted to point that out to citizens and, and thank everyone involved with that. I benefited from that myself when we put one in and so that's, uh, one of the ways that the town helps us all out to, to move forward. So if there are no questions from, from council members, we'll open to public comment on this item, which as you hear is a fairly quick administrative correction to, um, just putting back something that we had in the code. Michelle?
Um, I don't think you have any public comment. If you want to just wait a minute, sometimes it takes a moment. But I don't see any public comment.
All right, bringing it back to council. Perhaps it's time for a motion.
I would.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, just confirm you're closing the public hearing?
Well, well, yeah, okay. Bringing it back to council, um, closing the public, public, uh, yeah, this is a public hearing. So we're closing the public hearing and bringing it back to council for a motion.
Okay, I, I will, uh, I will make a motion. Um, did I need to read the whole subject line with all the code sections? I read the recommendation.
Uh, yes, you actually need to just read the recommendation.
Okay, so, um, I would, um, make a motion to introduce and waive the first reading and read by title only an ordinance of the town council of the town of Fairfax, adding section 15.04.06.5 electric vehicle charging stations to chapter 15.04 construction codes and setting forth procedures for expedited permit processing for electric vehicle charging stations.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, Goddard, second, Cutrano. Michelle, would you like to take the roll call vote?
Yes, Mayor. Council member Goddard.
Uh, yes.
Council member Kohler.
Yeah.
Council member Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman. Vice Mayor Hellman, did? Oh, you're muted. Sorry, I wasn't looking.
Sorry, I said yes, sorry.
Thank you. And Mayor Ackerman.
Yes, on that.
That's all ayes. Thank you.
That passes. Um, item 10 is continued to the March 3rd meeting, possibly. And item 11 now
Right.
to the regular agenda. Yes.
Run item five now.
Oh, yes, that's right. Item five is, uh, was moved from the consent. So item five is the status update on the potential location of a temporary skate scooter, scooter park. And Garrett, would you like to give a status report on that?
Sure. So you may recall, just at your last meeting in January 20th, uh, you received a residence petition that was requesting establishment of a skate scooter park. During that meeting, uh, the resident group indicated that a temporary location for a skate scooter park. At that time, the council indicated that you couldn't really discuss it at the meeting, but you could talk about it and you'd schedule it for consideration at a future meeting. And so just to clarify some things from the 20th, the council directed staff to work with Park to talk about a permanent location for a skate scooter park. And that's just to clarify a separate process and location for a temporary skate scooter park. So there's no confusion there. So Park and Park's actually gonna start their process February. So Park and Park's actually going to start their process February eighth, I'll be meeting with them at the Park meeting. Now, at your twentieth meeting, you did assign Vice Mayor Hellman and Councilmember Cutrano to go ahead and work with the petitioners to, oh, sorry, it's the bird clock. Um, to identify a temporary location or a skate scooter park. Uh, and then come back to this meeting with an update of where they're at. I think the main thing, as you saw, that a temporary location has been identified. It's actually in the pavilion parking lot, the west side of the lot. And in the supplemental material, it's just handy, it kind of clarifies it's the western part of the lot where three spaces are and then kind of stretches over to where the compost bin would be, but steps before the sand pit. So that's the new preferred location. I think at the last meeting, they talked about a different location near test court, so that's off the table. This is the preferred temporary location. And actually, in the supplemental material that you receive from the petitioners group, they actually provide that information on location. They have a map, uh, they provide some what the features could look like. They talk about the timing. Uh, one of the things that you should note, um, because you're not really making any decisions, but it's good to keep this in mind for the seventeenth, although you could provide direction either to your, to council members or, or to staff. But it does talk about if the council were to prove it on the seventeenth, they would like to make it immediately available. Um, or twenty-eight hours available afterwards, make it available, I assume for skating. That's something to keep in mind. Another thing to keep in mind is technically we have an ordinance that bans skateboarding on parking lots. Um, so we'd have to go through the process to amend that. But I don't think that would stop us from actually using it for that use, if that's what you decided. Probably something to keep in mind, I think, is you should think about hours of operations. You can always talk to the group of what they, they have in mind related to that. Their memo also talked about their construction, kind of how they see it working, when it would begin, March first, other communication efforts. Uh, under the costs, they've done fundraising, it sounds like they've gotten ten thousand dollars leasing commitments. No town funds would be required. And then you talk about some next steps. That would, uh, happen on the, well, if the council were to actually approve this on the seventeenth. Now, part of this is, just so you know, it's a work in progress from a staff perspective, so there's different things we need to work out. They're talking about fencing. There's all these different things and we, we believe there's enough time to go ahead and, you know, have most of those issues addressed, hopefully by the seventeenth, or at least give you an idea of how things would all, would all work. And obviously, we've had the chamber inform the businesses, we'll put out signs. Uh, the group does have a flyer that they're giving out to the different businesses in that area and residents. And so that's kind of the update in a nutshell. I, I'm not sure, and they may, Vice Mayor Hellman and Councilmember Cutrano might actually have some additional comments.
I do, that was awesome though, thank you, Garrett. Um, I just want to highlight a couple of things. Yeah, the first is, so if approval is obtained on the seventeenth, two weeks from tonight, we do want a legal spot, this spot that we've identified, the pavilion lot, um, within forty-eight hours, a legal spot for the kids to skate. So that is something that we would want within the, teed up for, for action and how to support that. Garrett, we can talk about. And then just from a design, building and, uh, license contracting standpoint, I just wanted, hopefully everybody has this supplemental document, because there's a lot of detail in here and there's a lot of work going into this on a daily basis. Um, a pretty broad, uh, group of individuals very focused on this right now. So we have a semi-pro skater, Jeff Toffley, who's worked on the Marin City, Mill Valley, Bolinas, and several skate parks throughout the nation, as well as the Van Skate Park in Mexico City. So he has squeezed this into his schedule to arrive on March one. And then Peter Gubbins, who's local and many of you know him, he has, uh, donated, he's a licensed contractor, he's going to donate the fencing and the labor. We also have, um, a local who grew, grew up here, Chris Lopez, who has, uh, the company Minden Builds. He now lives in Nevada, but he's, he's connected with Peter Gubbins and they're also going to, um, donate labor. So we have all of this amazing volunteerism to, that's contract licensed labor, um, to do the job. And they estimate they can do it within four weeks' time and have it, you know, if we get, if we start March one, we could be ready April one. So that's pretty exciting. The, um, communication, um, that's something, uh, Garrett, we wanted to confirm with you that the sandwich boards would go up. We did communicate around downtown this week with a flyer that's also attached to your supplemental packet. And so there's a website and there's a QR code about, um, you know, if you want to learn more details about the project and if you want to, if you want to donate, um, both Brenna Gubbins of, uh, Live Water and, uh, Proof Lab have both committed five thousand each to the project, so that's amazing and generous. And then we have some private donate, donations coming in as well. And I just want to clarify for the public, because we've gotten some misinformed emails that this project is on the, you know, public dime, which it's not, we have not asked for any funds, although it is eligible for Measure A, we have not requested any funds. Um, so as far as next steps, um, we are looking for, uh, Public Works to connect with Peter Gubbins, just to confirm specifications on this, on the fencing. And, um, we have the park safety consultant that will review the park design. And then, um, we also, uh, Garrett has already looked into the park and rec. So all the parks in Marin County are enrolled in the park and rec, um, insurance. And Garrett thankfully has already explored that for us and it's pretty turnkey. And so, you know, upon approval, um, hopefully, uh, two weeks from tonight, we can just add our program onto, um, park and rec insurance on the eighteenth. Uh, Chance, do you have anything to add?
Yeah, just, just, just one additional thing, um, which is to say, and, and thank you for mentioning, um, the insurance bit, uh, Vice Mayor Hellman, because I know we, we've received some emails about that too, uh, like the liability be, uh, piece of this. But the other thing I wanted to mention to the council members is that the four-week build time, uh, it is, uh, so quick, because again, it is, it's temporary, so all of this stuff is, uh, would, would exist um, as we move forward with Parks and Rec Commission and the skate group trying to determine a, a permanent location. But these, these, uh, obstacles and, and things in this proposed park aren't fixed. So that's the other thing the public should be aware of, that all of this stuff is, is at, at once, um, weatherized and, and safe and would be able to withstand, uh, things over an extended period of time, but at the same time is all able to be, uh, removed, uh, prior, or, you know, once there is a permanent location. So just want to make that clear as well for the public.
Renee? You're muted.
I'll mute. Thanks. Um, and I realize it's a report, but I'm, I'm curious about the asphalt. Um, i- is it adequately smooth and flat? And what happens to, uh, the green space, earth over by the wall? Um, that at this point, it remains unpaved. Does that remain unpaved?
I don't know it.
You want me to take that, Vice Mayor Hellman? Yeah, uh, so we had asked the, the design committee of the skate group that very question. And, uh, the most recent response is yes, that they will be able to construct and erect these wooden structures, uh, over that space without, you know, removing or remediating any of that, that grassy space, uh, at, at least in the current, uh, depiction of, of what they're thinking about for design, so. But there, there might be more news, uh, on the seventeenth on that front as well.
Whoops. Can I ask my second question real quick, Barbara? Uh, the, the other question I had is, um, I've been asked, and you guys have talked about that it's possible to donate. Is park and rec, is the town able to receive donations and have them be tax deductible through park and rec? Yeah. So that can be a direct donation as a tax deductible donation.
Well, that was one thing that we thought about and explored, but in we, and we can take this offline, but in separate sort of efforts, it's sort of hard to isolate, you know, there's like different efforts going on and we wouldn't be able to isolate.
Okay, it, we don't have to go into everything, I wondered if that was, um, uh, you know, something that was being explored, but thanks.
Okay, um, thanks. Um, so I have a couple of questions, thank you for all your work on this. Um, I noticed on the supplement, which talks about the temporary, uh, skate park, it talks about the proposed project extending into the current compost bin. And then, um, that it can be used for compost in summer and fall. And so my question is, um, fall is also the rainy season too, so I'm just wondering, I guess my worry is, are we going to have the compost bin available when the time is needed for that? That's the first question, then I have one more question. Uh, my, my worry, uh, just I want to make sure that people can get into the compost. And I'm worried that we're going to be sort of overlapping. Councilmember Cutrano, you're shaking your head, so it looks like you've been answered.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to, to attempt to address that. Uh, uh, after the design committee, that skate group, uh, went on a sort of field site visit, uh, with myself, uh, and also, um, Vice Mayor Hellman and Town Manager Toy on Zoom because of technology. I was able to bring them into the mix for a minute. Uh, the group was really hoping to extend that little bit into the compost bin area um, for that, uh, half-pipe in order to create, uh, a, a wider variety of obstacles and not make it feel too cluttered in a smaller space. And so it gave it enough room that it made a more dynamic temporary skate park. Uh, the thought in that report, it's my understanding is, you know, that really fantastic real estate of the sand pit and the compost, um, they sort of oscillate where, uh, you have compost at one point of the year, the sand at another point in the year. Uh, currently, there's no compost out there, it's just a, of empty bin and then the sand is there. And so the thought would be that you would sort of flip back and forth while that temporary stuff is, is there if, if that is the timeline that we're working with. And so the compost could be used one point of the year, sand at another. And if that is something that council is, uh, going to approve, that, that amount of the footprint, um, I think it would just be up to, to us to direct staff to figure out the, the actual transit, like how to make sure that a dump truck could get in there and dump stuff when they need to and making sure people can, can park or back up into that space without affecting the temporary skate park location.
So I, I got the idea that the idea was the sand is not there at the same time as the compost, so you could switch off. But my worry was, is that we do get rain in the fall. Now, obviously, we didn't get much. And so I'm wondering if there's going to be a disconnect. I mean, maybe this temporary skate park won't be there, so maybe it won't matter at that point. But I was just worried about that disconnect, so just, um, you know, take it into considerations as you work through this. And then my other question is, when we talk about the timing and sequencing, should we approve this on two seventeen? The idea is to have a legal place, I think, uh, Vice Mayor Hellman said, within forty-eight hours. And my question for the temporary, 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 so before the formal temporary, um, how are you going to demarcate that? Because my worry is, you know, we have people parking in that lot and unless there's some demarcation, so the skaters understand, don't flip over to where those cars are or a car coming in. So is that part of the plan to make sure that there's a way to? I don't think you were talking about the fencing for this thing within forty-eight hours. So how are we going to make sure that we don't get a, a mix of kids on skateboards with cars?
Yeah, it's a great question. Yeah, Garrett, you want to chime in?
That part, what I, I think, pretty easy, we would just put out the metal barricades. Because I don't think there'd be any, there wouldn't be any elements, so it's just corridoring it off to where you, you can skate. But we'll be, make, we'll make sure that's all clear on whatever.
Can I ask, when you say metal barricades, I'm not sure, are those the things that we do for like the parade? So they're not going to stick out and be in the way of the cars coming in, is that right?
Yeah, the spaces here and the barriers.
Not those big orange things?
No, 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 the metal breaks.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have.
And I just chime in with a, with a huge thank you to you guys for quick work and working with a wonderful group of community members. And, um, I look forward to the discussion on, on this meeting. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I wanted to say the same thing, thank you to, to both of you, council members, Cutrano and, and Vice Mayor Hellman for, yeah, that was a, that was a great report and, um, and thanks also to the, to the citizens who have been bringing this forward. And, um, we're, we're being able to consider this very quickly, which is, which was the intention. And it seems like it's, it's clear, the, how, how we're doing. So at this point, it's, uh, we should bring in the public and, uh, hear comments on this, this status report and, and, um, any thoughts we need to discuss or direct staff on before we consider this further at the next meeting. Um, Michelle, if you would open the public comment, please.
First commenter is Jonathan. So Jonathan, I've unmuted you.
Hello, this is Jonathan. I've been patiently waiting to, um, try to explain to you all that I've lived across the street from the skate park ever since it's been legally skated on for the last year. They make horrible noises, banging and smashing their boards around to a point where I can hardly, I have to put earplugs in my ears in order to sit in my bedroom. Now, this is the same across the way for other people who live in apartments that are off the parking lot area that you're proposing to put in a skate park in. And do you realize how many people are going to come in town to skate in that park? How many young thirteen, fourteen-year-old kids are going to come here? Abuse alcohol, drugs. I've seen it happening, I have to walk across the street and ask these kids to go home because they're over there still skating at ten o'clock at night, making a lot of noise, a lot of racket, smoking joints. I mean, these, these are teenagers. So you better stop and think about this and realize what a skate park brings to a town before you start putting one in, especially right here in the center of town where people live. It'll drive me out of my home, and I've been here for over thirty years. And I hope that you'll consider the residents that live around the parking lot before you go ahead with this project. I don't know what else to say to you. I mean, Rococo has outdoor, um, classes that drive me crazy with their music. What am I supposed to do? You gave them the, the permits. So this is a potential problem for me and my girlfriend. We don't really want to move, but I don't know what choice we'll have if you have a skate park across from where we live. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Jonathan, you've been heard, yes. Um, Michelle?
Next speaker is Pam Miggs. You are unmuted now.
Hi. Um, I have a couple of things. First of all, um, I'm just going to list them all. Will somebody be part of staff or somebody to monitor the park? I understand certain age kids will need to have a parent there if they're under a certain age. And are you going to institute rules around, around helmets or? And I also did some research on scooters with skateboards. They don't get along, they don't get along because the scooters don't ride skate, skateboards. And believe it or not, I was a skateboard rider in nineteen sixty- And believe it or not, I was a skateboard rider in nineteen sixty five. So I, I wanted to bring that up because I have an eight year old grandson and I might be bringing him in there. Um, the other thing is about approval from the planning commission. Does this need to be reviewed by the planning commission? You are making a change on the town property and I wondered about that. And then last, um, my other question is, is are you going to be doing any digging in the earth or whatever? Because a long time ago, I think it was Martha Tureg told me that there were burial, me walk burial sites in and around the parking lot. So I wanted that to be addressed as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Pam.
Next speaker is Andrea Summits. You are unmuted now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, I just wanted to really thank you all. I've spoken to a few of you about this. Um, I have three children who are avid skaters. And who have also really been isolated and, uh, you know, down during COVID. It's been an incredibly difficult time for kids, especially teenagers. Having to stay isolated and not see friends, not be able to go to school, not be able to, do a lot of the same physical activities they used to do. And, um, this has just created such an incredible buzz amongst all of the friends, uh, that they have. And the middle schoolers are just, I overhear my kids talking, um, to their friends about it on the phone or on their, you know, Snapchat or whatever. And they're adding, and they are just so excited that it has really given them something to look forward to. And they're thrilled to have something in town that is, um, of interest to them and catering to their age range. And, uh, in giving them something fun to do in town that will still be safe in COVID. So I just really want to thank you. I'm so excited about this and I'm so thrilled. Kids to have, uh, have this activity to look forward to and can't wait to see it happen. And I especially want to thank, um, Vice Mayor Hellman and, uh, Councilmember Cutrona. And also, uh, Town Manager Garrett Toy for all the time and energy that they've been putting into this. It's been, um, really thorough and, and thoughtful. And I'm just so grateful, um, for the team to, that's, that's really putting that time and energy into making this happen. So thank you all so much and I'm really excited about it.
Thank you, Andrew.
The next speaker is Stephen Tejero. You are unmuted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Mm-hmm. All right. Hi, my name is Stephen Tejero. I'm part of the skate park committee. I just wanted to call in and just thank everybody for their comments and the time that they're spending to, get their voices heard, whether, um, it's for the park or against the park. I think it's really important that we hear, um, everyone's ideas and everyone's feelings about this. I just wanted to share that. So that you guys know, I do, I, I do want this to be for the, for the whole community. Um, you know, we got to think about the kids on this one. Fairfax is the place where I think, you know, kids are already, you know, smoking weed or, you know, drinking or something because they need a place to, they need an activity that has some form of risk. And unfortunately, as we already know, uh, you know, Marin County has a disproportionate amount of kids doing that kind of stuff. And having a healthy place to take risks, like a skate park. Um, you know, where you, you can take a risk in a controlled setting, uh, will seriously help curb that. In my own understanding of what kids need. Um, the other thing I wanted to say, uh, was just in, in response to the woman who, um, I forgot her name. I'm so sorry about skaters and scooters. The relationship between skaters and scooters, in my own experience, and I think overall is improving with time. As, you know, scootering in its current form is, is a pretty new sport. Um, so as skaters learn how scooters move through the park, what tricks they tend to do. And this, and the scooters understand how the skaters move about. Uh, we're, we're discovering ways to work together in the skate park to not have collisions, not be frustrated with each other. And instead just find ways to work together. I know I'm always encouraging skaters and scooters to get along, uh, while I'm in a skate park. I don't know, maybe people don't know, I'm twenty eight years old. I skateboard. And, uh, and I like being a leader to the youth in my community. And that's, that's all I wanted to share. So, uh, thank you everyone for your time and your consideration and your passion. And, uh, I want to make life wonderful for everybody. So I think a big part of that is connecting with each other. So I'm glad for this opportunity. So, uh, thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
The next speaker is Mallory G.
Hi, um, hey, Michelle, will you just, uh, do a few names at a time so people will know what's coming up? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so I'm not against the state, uh, skate park. But I am against losing more parking spaces. Um, this, this is, how many are we going to lose on this one? Can somebody answer that when I'm on here? That's it? Are the three against the wall?
Yeah.
Okay, so, all right, so that's.
And this is, this is conceived of as a temporary skate park as well.
I know, but, but we're temporarily, and then if it becomes permanent, are we going to still only lose three?
Well, the, the permanent skate park is a completely different location, most likely. And that's a different discussion, but this would be, it's kind of conceived of as my understanding. It's, it's the, the hurry about this is because of COVID, the kids not really having any activity during COVID. And during COVID, we might not need as much parking in town as we've seen. So that's just the way it seems like it might fit together, but it's three spaces.
Okay, I'm, I'm glad to hear that. And, um, you know, when it's something that you guys really want this, and I, I wanted to, I don't have a problem with this. But I also really wanted a dog park and people have not done anything to other, you know, to make that happen at all. And I've had a whole list of people who are interested, um, but it just, we couldn't find a space, blah, blah, blah. Um, so I would like that to become a priority as well. Because in COVID, people would like their dogs to be running outside instead of staying in the house all day and getting crazy. Um, I want, I want to agree with Jonathan. I think it's really, if I lived there across in the park, it would get me crazy too. Um, because you have to consider that there are people living in those buildings right near that. And I, I think it's not a great space, whether it's temporary or not, it's still going to be really annoying. Um, and, and whomever said it's, you know, people are not going to do less drugs because they have a skate park. They're going to still be doing drugs if they're doing drugs. And so it might make life wonderful for the skaters, but it's not going to make life wonderful for people who are living there. I would love to see it at your, behind bless you, behind Deer Park School. Um, if there's a lot of land there that's not being used behind the school, behind the, um, where they're, where they're growing the vegetable garden. That might be a great place for it at the beginning of where people go at the fence for Deer Park. Um, or even on the other side, if you could get that permitted by, I don't know if it's the water district or the school district. But if it's for the school district, they should really like having that for kids. So I just want to, um, say that that might be a great place to do it. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mallory.
I do not see any more comments, Mayor.
Okay, so we will close the public comment on that item and bring it back to council. Any further discussion on this, um, this was, this has been a status report. From council members. Okay, and again, thank you to our subcommittee for working on this and we'll, we'll hear more about it on the seventeenth. Okay, so, finding my pieces of paper here. Um, so now on to item eleven, the next item on the agenda. That would be, um, the discussing, this has been continued three times. So Renee, here we go. Uh, Garrett, would you give a staff report on item eleven?
Sure. So yes, as the mayor pointed out, this item has been continued from three meetings. Um, and what it is, is the council, the request is discussed, consider the concept of forming a community emergency slash disaster preparedness committee. And appoint an ad hoc committee, ad hoc council subcommittee, develop recommendations for the community's role and structure. So this item was originally brought to the council by Councilmember Goddard that considered the formation of this, community emergency disaster preparedness committee. It'd be modeled after similar committees they have in like Mill Valley and Sausalito. And, but the committee's role would actually be different from the town's disaster council, which is identified in town code. And the thought pattern is this community emergency committee would not be regulatory in nature. I think it, it wouldn't really advise on like public safety procedures or policies or personnel or anything like that. Really, the thought pattern is this committee would be more of a community forum on emergency preparedness. Maybe recommendations to the town on programs, work closely with the firewise neighborhoods, maybe even the neighborhood resource groups. And kind of focus more in the practical hands-on, local level type programs. Now, all that being said, there are lots of details that would need to be worked out of what the council's vision of how this would work. But the first question for policy is whether or not this is a committee that the council doesn't want to consider forming. And if you do, then Councilmember Goddard's suggestion would be perhaps it'd be better if you formed a council, ad hoc subcommittee of the council, then that group could reach out, maybe talk to community members, maybe contact other communities. They work with staff to come up with how the role and structure of this committee would be. And then come back to the council with a recommendation on how this committee would actually work in operations for the town and its composition. So if you did want to do something like that, then it might be beneficial for the other council members to also share some general policy thoughts with whoever this ad hoc council subcommittee would consist of. Because you have things like, what is the purpose? First of all, what is the name? It's a pretty long name as it shows in the staff report. So you, you have that, the role, who's on it, what's its composition? Should there be council member liaisons? Does there need to be staff support? Like should fire have a rep? Maybe it's a role for our new disaster coordinator. Get, um, position to be created and then filled for the Ross Valley Fire Department. Does it need to have a neighborhood resource group representative, someone from police, someone from staff? And you have budget issues. So there are lots of issues to be resolved. And that's why the thought pattern is perhaps ad hoc subcommittee would actually make that, process a little more efficient and easier for the council. If you gave that committee some level of guidance of what your thoughts were on some of these things. Or maybe they go off and come up with something, come back and then you shared your thoughts. But, um, that, that concludes the staff report. Um, I'm sure Councilmember Goddard might have some thoughts on this matter.
Um, yeah, no, thank you, Garrett. That was very well represented. Um, and as you all see, there are, you know, the, the, the details really are, um, are, uh, overwhelming if we look at how we would break it down in order to have a real discussion tonight. But, um, if, uh, in, in my, uh, in my exploration, and I've done a lot of looking into this around the county. Um, there are, um, these citizens' disaster councils, disaster preparedness. I like the, the name, emergency preparedness committees. Um, and, uh, Mill Valley being probably the, um, most, um, you know, the, the exemplary one in my mind. Um, and it, they, they've existed throughout time. What we have, as Garrett said, is a disaster council, which is codified. Um, and, uh, Barbara Kohler, when she was mayor, brought the, the disaster council, convened the, the disaster council. Because we needed to do an update of our emergency operation plan. Um, and, uh, that disaster council, um, and I, I just wanted to read this. Um, the duties of that disaster council are to develop and recommend emergency mutual aid plans and agreements for adoption by the council. As well as ordinances, resolutions, rules and regulations, um, uh, that are necessary to implement such plans and agreements. Um, what I'm looking at here is, is not that. And that disaster council will continue as is and as is, um, in, in our town code. But this would be, um, uh, what, sorry, let me, let me just tell you where, where the origins of thinking about this were, um, at one of the disaster council meetings, um, which I've been on two times as vice mayor and two times as mayor. When there were other members of the community that obviously needed to have a seat at the table. Um, but it wasn't really appropriate in terms of the actual, um, the actual, uh, uh, you know, work, work plan and duties of that disaster council. And the people that I'm mostly referring to are, uh, representatives from the schools, uh, library, uh, the Commission on Aging and Age Friendly, Firewise Representative, NRG, Representative Cert Coordinators. And people, there were a lot of people that were included in this. And it became very clear that we, and, and actually it was said, um, that what we needed to do is look at the things on the ground right around the first PSPS. And we needed to see who was actually really doing the outreach in the community, who was connecting with neighbors. And in the last two years, we've had this explosion of involvement from the community. The development of the NRGs, um, the Firewise Neighborhoods were up to nine neighborhoods. And what to me is missing is a lack of coordination. With the Ross Valley Fire Department hiring a full-time disaster, um, coordinator, disaster preparedness coordinator, um, which has, is in process. Um, my thoughts are that, that, that coordinator would be the facilitator of our local citizens' disaster preparedness council. And would also move us toward a regional approach as Southern Marin has established very successfully. Um, so that the four jurisdictions as part of the Ross Valley, um, Fire Department, the JPA, would each have their own, um, citizens locally based, uh, committee. And then representatives would come together on a more regional basis so that we're actually connecting the dots, community to community. So, um, as you can see, there's a lot to this and, um, I'll be quiet now. But my, my hope was that we would have two of us go out, um, and, uh, bring something back to council. That would be, um, to be discussed and considered. Uh, so that's, my, my, my bringing it forward was wanting to coordinate.
I'm sorry, could you just clarify that last statement? You're recommending to council members come back with a more specific proposal?
That, that was what was in the, in the staff report is that tonight we would appoint two people, um, that would go out and do all of this research. And, um, connect with other members of the community because we have, we have great expertise in the community at this point. Uh, so that we could come back and consider something more specific, obviously.
Okay, and does anyone mind if I keep asking a question?
Go ahead, yeah.
Um, the Mill Valley and the Sausalito disaster councils, um, do they have council members on theirs?
Yes. And Sausalitos is different and I wouldn't, that wasn't a model that I was really, uh, very interested in pursuing for us. And it really had a big public safety element. Um, Mill Valley's is really the model. Corder Madera has, um, has, uh, has something, but it's almost identical to what we do here now with our disaster council. Um, Larkspur doesn't have one. Um, but what's most impressive to me is the Southern Marin Council that's come together. Um, and they, um, have coordinated through their, you know, police departments and their Southern Marin Fire. And, um, and they have a wonderful structure. So we're not inventing the wheel here.
Thank you.
Okay, so if I can just make sure I'm clear on, on what you're proposing, Renee, or what you're envisioning in any way. That, um, the disaster, that, that the disaster council that currently exists would continue. And it's kind of government facing. So it's, its role is to advise government on how, how regulations, ordinances, whatever could be, policies could be, uh, could be pursued. But this would be the citizens' disaster committee, or whatever we decided to call it, would be public facing. And also working with agencies like the fire and police and.
Yeah, it, it actually, um, I was just. Yeah, actually, I was just looking at my notes, Mill Valley does not have a council member on their committee. But I did copy from the Mill Valley Commission's website that their duties include identifying and organizing community groups, including residential, neighborhood associations, schools, and businesses, promoting community emergency response training, educating residences on ways to be more self-sufficient in a disaster, and so forth. So it's very much public-facing. And we have all these components in our town right now, people who are working hard at this. And I think we can make a much more efficient and holistic effort if we bring everyone together.
So there's a public-facing component, but then you were also mentioning that you would envision it as as a group that interfaced with similar groups within the Ross Valley. So there would be that sort of larger connection. So it's sort of bringing together a lot of energy that's already out there and giving it a place both in Fairfax and throughout the Ross Valley to be able to be organized and therefore be more efficient and more effective. Is that kind of a summary of the thinking?
That captures an essence, yes.
Okay, all right, I'll stop. And Chance?
Thank you, Mayor. And one more further clarifying point to Vice Mayor Hellman's question is, I believe the actual rep to that commission, which is appointed folks like our committees and commissions here in town, is the fire chief, Chief Tubbs in Mill Valley, who then reports back to council in Mill Valley. So they do have a staff rep, and I think same with Sausalito, but theirs is their police chief, I believe, or someone from the police department. And my question for council member Goddard, and really just to put it out there, is when there was like a citizens' group during the pandemic that sort of came together to, you know, do on-the-ground outreach and support as far as delivering groceries and running other errands for folks, think what, and a couple of us were on that. What I think we realized is between, you know, CERTs and VOAD and Firewise and all these different groups, there still wasn't really a body that was identifying gaps in terms of service and things like that. So whereas the Mill Valley group seems to do a lot of tabling and like signing people up for CERT trainings and things like that, I'm just still seeing that we're like, we might not be addressing the gaps as far as not having all of these different groups and the right people in the room if this is mostly like public-facing, public outreach. And I'm wondering if you see council member Goddard, that the current sort of group that currently exists, that I believe you and council member Kohler have served on in the past, and it sort of comes together from time to time, do you see that being maybe meeting more regularly and trying to work out the gaps in service? And then there's a group, like a committee, that promotes stuff publicly? Because I see that this doesn't really hash out any of those processes.
Barbara, go for it. You probably have a response, and I have a little, I have a response as well. Go for it.
The Citizens Disaster Council is convened by the mayor. And it's not something that is supposed to meet all the time. I am the only mayor who's convened it, and I've convened it twice since 2006. And what that really is about is updating our emergency operations plan for the town. And also, and we convene Red Cross, all kinds of stakeholders, Commission on Aging, Marin Medical Reserve Corps, to make sure that we have the most up-to-date emergency operations plan that are activated by our police and fire. And one of the things we did with the Citizens Disaster Council the last time I convened in 2019 is I had a dream about creating this community-friendly evacuation maps, because the maps that are part of the town's emergency operations plan are really meant for fire and police. They understand they're not, you know, it's a whole different ball of wax. And so I don't believe, and Sasha McIntyre was on the Citizens Disaster Council in Mill Valley for many years, and I believe led it a number of times, is that I don't believe those groups necessarily feed each other. I think what's happening is what we've got is a lot of folks with Firewise. We now have our NRG coordinator that we hired for a few months. There are these various groups that get together to help out, sort of like what happened with that, I wouldn't even call it ad hoc, but the coronavirus task force that tried to help out during the COVID work, of filling in various gaps. And I think what you're looking at is more, what can the community do to help out? Let's say we have a huge flood. So fire police do their thing with emergency operations plans, getting people in and out. But what can the community do to work together? And so Ross Valley Fire, probably as you know, since I think you're on the fireboard now, or the alternate, no, Stephanie knows, Renee knows, is going to hire a disaster coordinator for Ross Valley. So what I see is one difference between what Mayor was saying is, you know, if Fairfax creates this committee, that will be the citizens', various groups, getting together to do citizen work. And when Ross Valley hires that disaster coordinator, it probably would be a nice fit for that person, because that person would be working a lot with the NRGs, for that person to participate at times. I don't see this being that we're going to force San Anselmo and others in the Ross Valley to create similar groups. They may decide to do so in the future. But I think we're looking at Fairfax, and then how do we kind of get some of these community grassroots efforts working together in a more cohesive format? Does that make, was that what you had in mind, council member Goddard?
Yeah, this was not a a opportunity for us to go in and ask the other three jurisdictions as part of the Ross Valley Fire District to create their own local committees. I was just really struck by the importance of more regional approaches. But before we even ventured into a regional approach where we're coordinating amongst jurisdictions in the Ross Valley, we need our own. So I think there is a place for interfacing with the disaster council, but I think that this is a separate entity and that we have lots of pieces, and we just need to see where the gaps are. So, you know, and I have, I'm not in a place of being an expert here. This needs to be developed by the council, but my proposal was that two of us go out and bring something very specific back to discuss.
That makes sense.
Okay, so at this point, I would wonder whether maybe we should bring the public in for comments on this, and then we can come back and discuss it further. Okay. So Michelle, if you would open up the public comment for this.
Sure. So the public, the hands are starting to go up. The first two hands are Pamela Miggs and Jody Timms, so followed by Mallory. So Pam, I've unmuted you.
Okay, great, thanks. Okay, so being Firewise and Cascade Canyon, I think, three years, doing a lot of outreach, I mean, boots on the ground, walking the neighbors before COVID and recently did door hangers. We need help from the top down. The, you know, I also started NRG on this block, and it's been a couple of years, and we are just, people are just not connecting. And I think it's because when we try and explain what is an NRG, or what, and you start talking about disasters, and there's no website, there's no hierarchy, they need this thing to be connected with the council. And I've also been attending countywide NRG meetings and county-wise Firewise meetings. And the ones that are successful have this connection with one or two council members and police and fire, and then a staff person. There's also a great one out in Belvidere you might want to check out, and I think it's a doctor who actually facilitates that and teaches first aid. But it's been a really struggle to get people to come into the NRG model. And I think, and there's not enough people as well. There's just not enough volunteers. So and the coordination is, you know, one person can't do it for the whole town. And I think if you put it, like I said, a leadership role that comes down from the town and present it that way and have a website and, you know, and, oh, we're going to do disaster training this week or whatever, I think that would help it get along. And I'm glad that Ross, I don't know who's putting the money into this leader, but we really need it, and we really need to keep, move along this. I mean, we're still like, we don't really know, a lot of people up here don't know what to do. And we have half the Firewise Canyon that is not signed up for Firewise. We've got half of the people, and it's because we need more leadership at the top, and I think that would help. Thank you.
Thank you, Pam.
The next speaker is Jody Timms, followed by Mallory. Jody, you're unmuted.
Good evening, council members. I am so delighted to see this item finally come up. I'm a huge, huge fan. I've been going to lots of these disaster council meetings across the county and in cities. And there's just wonderful work happening out there, incredible coordination. It's desperately needed. And I know this is just really going to be very successful. I completely support two of you pulling together, starting to look at this together. I'm happy to be a resource in whatever way I can be, and I know there's a number, as you say, Renee, there's a number of people in the community who can really help, not to mention folks outside of our town. So I'm just a thousand percent behind this and so glad it's finally come up. So I hope you're able to move forward with it tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jody.
And next is Mallory. You are unmuted.
Okay, now can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, because I wasn't unmuted. I have to press it for some reason. Thank you, Michelle, for putting the list on. Now, this is not first response, but one of my organizations, the California Association of Marriage, Family, and Therapists, we have, I've been going to new meetings for me that are the trauma response team. So if you want to interface or you want me to go between, if it's any interest to you, to do it for people who, after the fact, are having a hard time emotionally dealing with whatever happened, I will be glad to make that happen between these two groups, between Fairfax and the trauma response team.
Thank you, Mallory. That's a piece that often gets forgotten. So I will put that down and reach out.
Thank you. I don't see any more hands raised, Mayor. Oh, I do see one. Never mind. Joe McGary?
Hi, good evening again. And I just, I think this is a great idea, and thank you, council member Goddard, for, you know, doing all the research on this and bringing it to council. And just in terms of the ad hoc committee, I'd like to recommend yourself and Chance to be the two who take it on, because I think it's something important, and it seems like both of you have done a great deal of work researching it. And I think all of Chance's work during the pandemic with the volunteer board, and this is kind of a grassroots effort that I think his skill set is perfect for. And I just want to, and also to what Chance said about finding the gaps, I really, you know, there'll be more coming, I'm sure, but I just want to throw out how important that is, particularly with our older adult community. And the idea of neighborhoods, these NRGs, really, you know, Pam spoke of the difficulty getting it going, but I think with council and town behind it, that it could be something that really takes off. And that really is a next step in terms of these different pockets throughout town, really supporting one another. And it's, I think it's something that through the pandemic, I think we're all craving that, that reconnection with one another. And I think this would be the moment where the idea of NRGs could really take off and be something maybe even more profound and amazing than the examples that we've seen down in Mill Valley. Because this community has it in its heart, and we want to take care of our most vulnerable folks, and this seems like a great pathway to do it. So thank you.
Thank you, Joe.
Okay, Mayor, I don't see any other hands.
May I make just one brief comment before we come back to discuss? I just, I'm looking at our list of attendees, and I see Amy Flynn out there, and I just want to send a shout out and a thank you, because Amy was our first step to creating some coordination, and she is our NRG coordinator. And I see this next step as an opportunity to really, you know, bump up the work and make this a more robust effort and work together. So just a shout out, and thank you for all you're doing behind the scenes. I know you're out there.
How are we getting this raised?
Michelle, if you see any other hands?
Yes, I see another hand. That's Amy Flynn. You're unmuted.
Thank you. I actually was kind of shy about jumping in, but I wanted to thank you guys so much for putting this on. And I want to tell you that there are so many people in the community that are ready to jump in. And a lot of my, I've had so many amazing conversations with people. And this is, I'm going to just, what Pamela and Jody already said, that there needs to be some town heads kind of overseeing things, but otherwise people are so ready to and so excited about helping their communities. And yeah, super excited, and this is awesome, and so excited that you guys are doing this. So, sorry, I'm not a very good speaker, which is why I don't raise my hand, but okay.
Thank you, Amy. You got the point across very well. Thank you. Thank you for your help in getting this to this point. So Michelle, are we?
I hesitate to say it again, but I think we're done. Yes.
Okay. All right, we'll close the public comment on this item and bring it back to council. So, yeah, Barbara? No, you're muted.
Yeah, I got it. Okay, so I just wanted to give some suggestions. And I'm fine with the idea, if they're willing, council member Goddard and Katrona to be the ad hoc to develop this, if, you know, if the rest of the council agrees with that. A couple of things I think we ought to keep in mind as we're doing this is the Southern Marin group is really kind of, kind of a mix of the Citizens Disaster Council and also the community group that, you know, Mill Valley has. And I don't think we should be doing that kind of model. I work with Southern Marin, our prevention authority. That's a different thing. It's much more formal. So I would say just a couple of things to keep in mind is I think we should try to keep this committee to seven members and look at the different representation. and look at the different representation, not create another very large committee. I would suggest, once it's formalized, to have one council member as a liaison only. It's too problematic to have two council members on a committee. And because that limits interaction with other council members regarding the Brown Act. But also, if you want to meet in the future with the Citizens Disaster Council, that won't work. Because when I was mayor, I said, let's have the vice mayor be part of the Citizens Disaster Council so we have that continuity. And so you're already creating a problem. So I, I think in order to be more flexible, having one council member as a liaison might be the way to go. I would suggest that rather than have staff support from town staff or even fire or police, I think if, if that's necessary as the group forms, to have somebody participate in a specific meeting, that makes sense. But I think once Ross Valley hires their disaster coordinator, which I believe we're all planning on paying for, that person would be a good person to participate if they can. I think that makes a lot of sense. I sat on for a number of years the Public Disaster Emergency Preparedness County Committee. And we did have folks that have that kind of role participating and it was really helpful. I think at this time, I would say, don't be looking at a budget at this time. I think if there's a need for money for a specific item, I think that could come to the council for that. I think sometimes we think that all these committees need money to start out with. I've sat on a number of committees that didn't have any money. And it was fine. It's just when you need something, let's be specific about what it is. And if there's a council member liaison, that's kind of that role, is to bring those things forward. So those are just a few ideas that I have. I think it's a good idea. I think, you know, maybe four or five years ago, there wasn't so many organized groups. Now it's a good time since we do have, I think we have more Firewise communities in Fairfax than any others. We have 11. And I think there are two more potentially. So in any other jurisdiction in Marin County, and Marin County has the most Firewise communities of anywhere in California. So that's kind of cool. And then having Amy on board has been, you know, Jody and I worked on that and made that move forward. So we really have a good start. And then, you know, some of these other neighborhood groups or folks, and I think what Pamela Miggs was talking about, is having more information from the town might make it easier for some folks to understand what they're kind of signing up for when they decide to be an NRG or when, you know, we have many communities that still aren't Firewise. So there's a lot to be thought about. And I want to thank you, Councilmember Goddard, for putting this forward and being so patient, waiting as we shunted it three times. Thank you.
So let me just ask Chance, would you be willing to be on a committee? And as, as Barbara stated, this is distinct from the question of which council members might be on this ultimate committee if we form it, but on the committee to explore it and bring back some more detail. Been suggested by me and you?
Yeah, I, I'm happy to be a part of it and prop this thing up. Pretty excited about it. Sort of like overflowing with ideas, but if I'm a part of it, then I'll just wait until we bring it back.
Well, it sounds like the nature of this is sort of, there's a lot of energy right now. And what this committee would be doing is helping to coordinate that. So that's sort of what you would be doing right now is helping to bring all these ideas together and, and create some, some vision for how our community's disaster preparedness would be more coordinated and really more sustainable. Right now, there's so much energy because we've sort of had a slew of disasters. And hopefully, we won't continue to have a slew of disasters all the time. But that always is the way it goes with disasters is there's a lot of energy after them, but then that sort of slows down. So that's sort of, I see there as being also a role for just the sustainability of our preparedness to keep us all well-prepared, even when it's a nice day. Any other council thoughts on this? And then maybe we?
No, not for me. I'm, I'm in agreement with everyone else. I'm supportive. I think you'll do a great job and I look forward to hearing back from you.
Great. And, you know, just to, to reiterate Barbara's point is this disaster coordinator with Ross Valley Fire is really sort of a linchpin for me and why I thought this might actually work and be effective. We've tried to convene a group similar to this in the past. And you end up with this massive amount of, of potential work that needs to be done. And then there isn't really anyone to, to bring it together. There needs to be a staff presence. And I would see that person as that, as that, as that staff. So, and it's not imminent that they would be hired. So this is something that we want to, that we want to stand up and bring back to discuss and then take, you know, be really, really clear and can, you know, and concise about our first steps.
And I think it would be great when you come back if you have kind of a real specific purpose statement written.
Yeah.
So that, I mean, you could start out smaller and then row as need be and change it later. But I think with so much out there, there might be a tendency to just be overwhelmed.
Yeah.
And, and just take on what makes the most sense for the first thing. And I would just say, I think I'm the only council member who's a CERT. And I would say to the rest of you, when they are working on a way to provide CERT training that can be virtual with a limited hands-on, it's a two-day training. I don't know how they're going to do it. But I would urge each of you to consider becoming a CERT. And Cindy Swift right now is our coordinator. I asked her to do that several years ago. And she's working on getting people recertified that others have lapsed. But also, she is working with folks to try to figure out a way to do it so it can be mostly virtual. But the hands-on is important. Thanks.
I actually am a CERT, but I need to be recertified.
I have a question about that. Thank you for raising. Because I wanted to get certified, but some, there was some limitation where you can't be a CERT and an NRG. You can't be a CERT and something. You can't, you can't be both.
Well, I don't know what, I wish I knew the answer. But I became a CERT in 2018. And I don't remember anything like that in the discussion. But you could check in with Cindy Swift.
Okay.
And, you know, right now, there aren't any classes for it. So you got a little time and, but check in with Cindy. I haven't heard of anything like that.
Okay.
Okay.
And I just, I would just like to toss in there though, that Barbara, I, I respect your opinion on this. But I do think there is a really important place as we, you know, develop a program and we get that, that central coordinator through the Fire JPA, not MWPA, but the Ross Valley Fire, that we do look regionally at this as well. Because just sitting on the fireboard, you see what happens when, when the towns and cities are disconnected. And you just kind of connect on a, a more administrative level or a board level versus looking at a sort of the age-friendly model, which is that San Francisco, San Antonio, San Anselmo and Fairfax's age-friendly are very well, I mean, you know better than I, very well connected. And there's quite a network regionally of age-friendly community. So I, I see it in a similar way. And yet, you obviously have to organize from inside first before you can go out and become a more robust, you know, larger, larger entity. So I just wanted to put that out there, that I find that model very compelling that Southern Marin has put together. When I looked at all their minutes of the people that attend those meetings, they seem like they really are, are productive and they're, they're building relationships between their different, the different people involved in their work. So anyway, that's moving forward.
That's, that's good. Just a quick thing. So Southern Marin is a huge fire district. They're huge. And so they coordinate really well because it's one fire district. And so it's a little different than our model. But I'd say, let's start with us and then see where it goes from there.
Great.
Okay, so do we need a motion, I suppose, to create this ad hoc subcommittee?
I'll make a bid to appoint Councilmember Goddard and Councilmember Katrana to the ad hoc subcommittee.
A second.
Okay. So I will take a roll call vote on that. I'll go ahead and do that. So Councilmember Koller?
Um, aye.
And Councilmember Katrana?
Aye.
You're willing to be on it? Councilmember Goddard?
Aye.
And Vice Mayor Hellman?
Aye.
And myself, aye. So thank you both. And thank you, Renee, for bringing this to us. It sounds like there's a lot of support for it, a lot of potential there. And we got started on the discussion tonight. I hope we can, we can see this come together. Okay, good. How's everybody doing? Are we game to keep, keep moving? Come, Garrett, five, five minutes? Okay, everybody good with a five minute break?
Can I just mention something that I forgot in the beginning of the meeting? So it is Black History Month. And also, we should honor the passing of Cicely Tyson and Hank Aaron. So maybe when we adjourn, we can re-mention them. And also, so we should be honoring Black History Month as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that. Okay, so it's 9:12. We can reconvene at 9:17. We, we are back after a brief recess. So next up is item 12. And those would be two resolutions regarding the Tree Advisory Committee. Garrett, would you start us out with a staff report?
Sure. As a background, you may recall on the January 20th, we indicated that at tonight's meeting, if you approve the second reading, if you introduced the, excuse me, let me step back a little bit. On January 20th, you had the introduction of the tree ordinance, which set the terms of the at-large members by resolution. We indicated at that meeting, we'd bring the second reading back at this meeting, which you approved earlier this evening. And then you'd have an opportunity to approve the resolutions as it refers to the terms of the at-large members and that process related to the at-large members. So the first resolution actually sets the term of three years for all the at-large members. And it has one exception for the one member who was there since 2016. It allows her to stay in place for another year. So what that means is the member's terms will expire in 2022 and 2023. So that's that first resolution setting the terms. Then the second resolution actually has to do with amending the interview and appointment policy because that handles the process for how an at-large member who is appointed to take the place of a committee member who's supposed to be on the Tree Committee, what their terms would be. And what we changed that to is six months. So how it would work is on the Tree Committee, it's supposed to be a representative from Park, Planning Commission and Open Space. As of now, neither of those bodies have appointed a member. So the council appointed at-large members for those committees. And what the ordinance, what, excuse me, not the ordinance, what the resolution does, it says that if during that term of the at-large member, because it's a three-year term, if one of those committees decides they want to put somebody on there, then they take an action at a meeting to let the town clerk know. She lets the at-large member know and they would serve for additional six months. So that's what the second resolution does. It sets the term of six months for those at-large members who represent a committee. And so pretty much that's, those are the two actions. You earlier adopted the ordinance, the second reading takes effect in 30 days. These resolutions would take effect immediately if you were approving. That concludes the staff report. Available for questions?
Thanks. So that was clear to me from the, from reading the, the staff report as well. But hopefully, that's clear to the public. This is just really kind of taking care of the administrative business of straightening out these, these terms. And just one clear clarification is that the, these are not term limits. So if a member's term comes to an end, that member is free to reapply and be possibly reappointed. So that happens all the time with committees. We reappointed Lees Hall to the Housing Committee so, tonight. So that, that happens all the time. These are not term limits. But, okay, any questions from council for staff before we go to the public? Okay, so if we can open up public comment, Michelle, if there's anybody that wishes to speak on this topic?
Sure, Mayor. I don't see any hands raised at this time. If anyone wants to make a comment? It doesn't look like it.
All right, all right. We'll bring it back to the council then. And is there any further discussion? Yeah, Barbara and Renee? Barbara, good luck.
Yeah, I had a couple of changes that I would like to make in Exhibit A. And these are just maybe fine tuning. So, I mean, they're, they're not critical flaws or anything. Under section 1.2, it says, "Applications are due by 5:00 PM Thursday of the week prior to the council meeting." To me, that really isn't leaving enough time. I would change that to say 5:00 PM Thursday, two weeks prior to the council meeting. That gives staff time to work with people to schedule them. And it just makes more sense to not be cramming that in because the next day, the agenda comes out. And if somebody hasn't gotten back to the clerk, it just makes it difficult. And then the other things, under 3.2, the Planning Commission. I realize the Planning Commission is different because people on the commission do not interview potential candidates. But I really do think, rather than saying would be encouraged to attend, is that applicants should be required to attend a full Planning Commission meeting. I think it's, it's pretty important to know what you're getting into. There are some folks who may not like the details of all the plans. And that may not be what they wanted to sign up for, but that's most of the Planning Commission. And there are some folks who just really want to focus on policy, which is hit and miss. Sometimes it really comes to the Planning Commission and other times it doesn't. And so I think, just like all our committees, it would be a good idea to require that people attend a full Planning Commission meeting. So they get the idea also that, like our council meetings, they're taking a really long time too. So if you have a lot of commitments in your life and that doesn't work for you, that might give you second thoughts about applying. So I just think that would be a good, just a good couple of tweaks to make. And that's all. Otherwise, I think it's great and I support the idea. And I think one of the things, you know, we talked about last time is the reason why we And I think one of the things, you know, we talked about last time is the reason why we really would like those three committees or commissions to appoint people is we want their expertise if people are willing to serve. So I, I don't think we need all at-large members. I think we want that possibility. But this gives us flexibility to do either or and gives people a six-month period to finish out their, uh, time with the Tree Committee, should that happen. So that's that. Thank you.
Thanks. Renee, you had a comment?
Yeah, um, so here I am going to completely and very respectfully disagree. And that is, um, to say in the second resolution, where we're talking about amending the interview and appointment policy. Um, I believe that with the Tree Committee, um, yes, it may be optimal that we would have representatives from, from Park and Open Space and, uh, the Planning Commission. Um, I understand the crossover, um, and why it might be especially helpful with the Planning Commission because of, um, because some of the work they do when they're approving projects, um, and related to trees and tree removal. But I feel as though if we have members of the community, um, who either love trees or have expertise in trees and they would like to serve on the Tree Committee, but they don't have either the time or the expertise to serve on one of the other committees, that they really shouldn't be, uh, I don't, I, I'm not going to use the word discriminated against, but really, it isn't really right for someone in my mind to step forward and they may have great expertise in, in all things trees. Um, and then be told that six months later, because someone stepped up from Park and Rec, um, that they have to vacate their position. So I would say, yes, it's optimal if we can, you know, if we can, um, encourage members of those committees to see if they can find someone who wants to be appointed. But once we have committed at-large members, um, I feel as though they should be able to carry out a three-year term like, uh, like is being established for, um, for all of them. So I just, they make my case there only because, um, I, there may be people who only want to do trees and have great expertise, but really don't want to do the other things. So that's my feeling. I, I'm, I'm very, I'm fine with the first resolution.
Yeah, I, uh, I could chime in at this point if, if neither of the other council members have something to say first. Yeah, that, I, I hear you and I, I heard what you were saying earlier in the, in the, in the last meeting where we discussed this, Renee, you were saying the same thing. Um, but on the other hand, I do see a value and it is, it is disappointing to me that in particular, the Planning Commission doesn't, hasn't been able to. And I was on the Planning Commission when this was discussed and I was one of the people who did not volunteer to join another committee. So I'm, I'm not criticizing anybody. I understand, um, especially because Planning Commission is a lot of work. And so it's, you know, we, we really have to respect the fact that people are putting an awful lot into that and don't want to necessarily join yet another committee. But that crossover would be awfully helpful. So I can see both sides of that and I think I kind of lean toward what's, what's in the staff report, which is an amendment of the current policy of saying that they're immediately off the, the substitute person. And just to sort of restate for the public, what Garrett was saying in his report, that we've got, we've got two at-large members from the community that stay on. They've got three-year terms. They can reapply, continue with another three-year term if they're reappointed. And then there are the, there are three committee members that in the ideal, might come from these other three committees, like the Planning Commission. But then we have at-large members that get appointed in their place. That's the situation we have right now where none of those three committees have put somebody on and so we have these other at-large members. So just for a term, so we can talk about it clearly, I would say, maybe we could call them for the moment substitute at-large members. The people who are substituting for the Planning Commission member or whatever. So they're on there. They also would have three-year terms as long as the Planning Commission and/or the other committees don't decide, oh, they changed their mind, somebody else does want to be on it from their committee. So the question we're talking about right now, just to be clear for the public, is what happens in that circumstance? Like, let's say today, the Planning Commission did find somebody that wanted to be on the Tree Committee. What would happen to the at-large member who's on that, on the Tree Committee in place of the Planning Commission member? And Barbara was saying she agrees with the staff report that proposes possibly six months that they could continue to serve and then the Planning Commission member can come on. Renee, you're saying they could, they should continue to serve out three years. I guess you mean from the time they joined the Tree Committee, it would be three years, not three years starting then, but yeah. So those are sort of the parameters. Um, I, my feeling at this point is I kind of, well, I, I'm seeing Stephanie's hand go up, so I'll, I'll wait and speak last on this. Stephanie, yeah, you're muted though.
I just have a clarifying question. So in that scenario, the at-large member on the Tree Committee, is it still considered a vacancy and is it listed as a vacancy until it's filled, like currently?
Well, if there, if there aren't five members on the Tree Committee, then we have a vacancy. And, right? And so.
But, but they fill a position that's been, that's left vacated because one of those three committees hasn't appointed someone. So if someone from the Planning Commission comes in and says, oh, I want to be on it, then that member at large that was appointed in that Planning Commission slot is the one that then gets six months and then has to move, move through.
But maybe to answer Stephanie's.
That's my question. Yeah.
But I think your question is this. If somebody is filling the Open Space Committee slot, that position isn't advertised as being vacant, just like we just had announcements tonight. If, if, if for some reason that was our policy, which it's not, you would have three vacancies, which you don't. Because we, Parks and Rec, Open Space Committee and the Planning Commission do have the opportunity, if someone comes in and wants to be on it, to appoint someone. And so, yes, and I just want to add one thing is that by saying that someone could finish out whatever their three-year term is, you're effectively negating the ability of any of those committees to put someone on. Uh, people on the Planning Commission, for example, have four-year terms. I think Open Space is four years. I'm not sure. Park is the same or three. And so I, I really think that if we can get that expertise from one of those three committees, we should be welcoming it and give the people the six months to, um, think about. We have other committees that are not that difficult to be on. And so, you know, a lot of times people get sort of enlivened by joining one committee and think, I want to be on a different one. Look at Chance, he was on too.
I absolutely hear your point. I just, uh, I just disagree.
If I could just add. I'm going to go back for a moment with Stephanie's question because now I'm confused. So Barbara, you were saying, or maybe I'll just ask Garrett. Uh, so if we're, let's say that one of the other committees, Open Space, doesn't, doesn't appoint anybody to the Tree Committee and we don't have anyone on their, in their stead as a substitute at-large member, as I was saying to call them for the moment. How do we, if we don't advertise that as an opening, how do we recruit someone to fill that space? I don't get that.
That is an opening.
Yeah, that is an opening. So.
We do advertise it.
Let's start like this. You have five slots. If one of them's vacant for whatever reasons, then that's a vacancy. We put out applications, people apply, you appoint them, they fill that slot. The only thing we're talking about here is on the odd chance a planning commissioner, you know, decides or Open Space or Park decides they really want to be on the Tree Committee, then yes, they would take the place, in this case, six months after. You know, it'd be a six-month notice for their at-large representative that they have to vacate. Now, the only thing I will say on that, that there's a lot of benefit to having a planning commissioner on the Tree Committee. Out of all the committees, that's the one where they would, they would probably very much benefit from coordination. Because planning commissioner can tell them exactly what they did at the meeting, tree committee say, hey, was that application, that tree removal part of that application? That would be awesome.
Right. That was the point I made.
That's why planning commissioners go, hey, we're going to be meeting twice a, a month for like ten hours a day or whatever. Uh, they just can't have that time. But that's, that's the only thing.
Did that answer your question, Stephanie, or are we misunderstanding your question?
Um, no, it did answer my question. Thank you.
Okay.
I have a suggestion.
Sure.
I don't know if anyone would be amenable to this, but it seems to me that the one committee that makes the most sense, to have that crossover is the Planning Commission, as Garrett just said and I said earlier. So what if the Planning Commission, only the Planning Commission reserved that right? So that if we appointed someone to the Planning Commission's spot because they didn't have anyone, um, that that person would then, um, that the Planning Commission would still reserve the right to have that person transition off in six months and appoint their own person. But for Park and Rec, I'm not sure we're getting the expertise about trees directly or the direct connection there. And I know even Open Space, to be honest, although that's a little more likely. But, but I, I, I just feel, I, I don't feel right. Um, I think I've explained my, my feeling. I'm not, uh, I, I'm, I'm not really but, you know, I, I will respect what everybody else does, but I have to, um, tell you after thinking about it, how I feel about it in terms of being a member of the public.
I would just say that I feel like you're a spirit of compromise, but I do feel that Parks and Rec, most of our trees are in the parks. And so I think that they, they may not bring a specific tree expertise, but they have an expertise about our parks. And that same thing with Open Space. Not much of our trees are in Open Space. So I really do feel that we should leave it as is, understanding what you're raising.
I, I'll just add that if someone, that these are public meetings. Anybody can go to the Tree Committee meetings and, and sit in on them. And at least the committees that I've been on, if people want to speak, it's pretty easy to speak. It's not, um, it's not a difficult thing. And so, uh, if someone were to be a substitute member for one of these committees and then that committee puts someone on and then they had six months that they could continue to serve, then they could continue to come to the meetings if they wanted to, if they were still really interested. And it's also always possible that somebody else, one of the other at-large members might just decide, you know, I'm, I'm ready to go anyway. Why don't you take my slot and, you know, I mean, you, you could, things could shift around. And then it would come to council to reappoint people for different positions because people can leave midterm as well. We always prefer if people serve out their terms once we've appointed them, but that could be something that could happen among the people on the committee as a, as a way of rejuggling when they have a new member that wants to come in. I mean, this is all envisioning a situation that hasn't happened, but you know, right now we've got three committees that have not appointed anybody to the Tree Committee. But, yeah, I, I have that leaning to try to keep it the ability of those committees to do it. Stephanie?
Well, I think Chance hasn't spoken yet.
Okay, Chance, yeah.
Yeah, uh, just a, a couple of thoughts here. The one, the one bummer that I see, uh, to uh, Councilmember Goddard's point is you have somebody who's, who is committed to the Tree Committee for an extended period of time, even if they know that, you know, there might be an opportunity where they're tapped and then their time, their time limit is reduced to six months. Um, but it's, it's, you have, you have to like hold that and know that there's somebody who's committed to three years. And then there are people on these other committees that already have a committee assignment that can be as, as time-intensive or not as they, they want to put in. But, um, just knowing that, you know, it's, you're adding a second burden onto, uh, an Open Space Committee member or a Parks and Rec member to then be on a second committee. Yeah, I, I think, um, and then you're pushing somebody off who's like fully committed to the Tree Committee. That's a bummer, uh, that, that that would happen. Um, since they're committed to it. But at the same time, um, I, I recognize the expertise thing. I think that is very valuable. What I will say is in my experience on the Open Space Committee, we don't have, we didn't have Tree Committee person after Mike Ardito stepped off. And what ended up happening is we had Tree Committee members come to our Open Space Committee meetings and relay information. And I found that to be, um, probably less time-intensive for Open Space Committee members and probably just as effective of getting a sense of what projects are coming before the Tree Committee. Um, so I just wanted to relay that information just from my own experience on the Open Space Committee, uh, in the last year.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilmember Cutrano. That was helpful. Um, I don't have a lot of passion. I see both sides on this. Um, and I like, uh, Councilmember Goddard, your, your feedback about the expertise and the Planning Commission in particular. Um, but fundamentally, the appointment exists when there is a vacancy that cannot be filled, that's, that no one from the public has, has come forward for, right? That's when the appointment comes into play, right? Right?
Garrett?
Or do we always have an appointment? I can't hear you, Garrett.
That's funny. Hit mute and then it muted me. Okay. So if I understand, um, your question properly, it's you have two at-large members that the council appoints. And then you have three at-large members that you may appoint if none of those three committees appoint somebody. So you only appoint somebody if those committees say, like Planning Commission, Park and Open Space say, no, we don't want to, we have no members interested in being on the Tree Committee. Then we put applications out or we put announcements out. And then you appoint.
Can I say one other thing? I, I feel as though there's one thing missing here and that is that we are assuming that the people who apply for the Tree Committee don't have expertise. Because they don't serve on another committee. I'm just saying that there may be people who are passionate about the Tree Committee, but they have no intention of being on Park and Rec, Open Space, or the Planning Commission. So I think that has to be considered and there may be more than two of them. So, um, that, that's where, that's part of where I'm coming from.
But then as, as Barbara pointed out, if the Planning Commission, for example, I just speak of the Planning Commission because that's, I served on the Planning Commission. As I say, I think it would be incredibly valuable if the Planning Commission did find someone. We currently have a vacancy right now on the Planning Commission. Let's say that someone were to fill that vacancy and we had a new planning commissioner and let's say that new planning commissioner said, I'd love to be on the Tree Committee. They'd have to wait three years to do it.
Talking about policy, Mayor. We're not talking about.
Policy of saying that the at-large member that's filling in for the Planning Commission member stays there for three years. That's how that policy could play out is that, and Barbara pointed this out, that that could really make it difficult for the Planning Commission to get someone on the Tree Committee because it's going to be three years before they can do that. Now, you know, maybe that at-large member could say, well, I'll move over because I think it's great. But you know, that's, it's, this is policy we're talking about and we're trying to figure out how to just make it work in the right way. I, uh, that's, that's all I'm pointing out. I realize it's policy. We're not talking about individuals here. Hypothetical situations and coming up with policy that makes it work the best. Stephanie, you have any thoughts?
I, I don't have a pulse on like how, how much this is an issue.
Yeah. It probably isn't in reality.
I don't think, so we changed this about two or three years ago. I think it was two years ago. And we haven't had anyone from those committees stepping up. And when I say expertise, I want to point out, it's, it's not, it's that they're bringing their knowledge of Open Space or they're bringing their knowledge of Parks and Rec, or they're bringing their knowledge of the Planning Commission and bringing that to the Tree Committee. So it's different than someone having expertise in trees. I think we're beating a dead horse here. And I personally feel I'd like to go ahead and make a motion. And I personally feel I'd like to go ahead and make a motion and see if it fails or not. And, you know, let's move forward with this because I think we're just going to beat this to death for the next hour and a half that we do such a good job at. So I would like to make a motion to approve these documents with the couple of changes that I suggested in the exhibit A. And we'll see if somebody wants to second that and see if it fails or not.
So at point of order, may I ask a question? Um, so if I wanted to support the first resolution and not the second, would I need to say no to both? Or is there a way to separate them?
The town manager.
That's who I'm asking.
You would take actions on the each separate resolution, but the first resolution sets the term of three years. The second resolution does the, does the six months.
Right. So we're taking them separately anyway.
All right. Well, then let me revise the motion, which is the first is adopt a resolution setting a term of three years for at-large members of the tree advisory committee.
I'll second.
As it says in the staff report, that's with the exception of the one person right now whose term would be extended an extra year. So that's part of the first.
No, it actually, the resolution just deals with all that. So it's, we don't need to make a friendly amendment.
Yeah, no, it's not an amendment. It's just a clarification that that's part of that. Okay. Got a motion and a second. Shall we take a vote on that? I think we're ready for that.
Thank you.
All right, um, council member caller, since you made the motion.
Hi.
Council member Cutrano.
Hi.
Council member Goddard.
Hi.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Hi.
And myself, it's unanimous. Okay, the first resolution is passed.
Okay, I'll, the second motion.
And Barbara, on the, on what you suggested on 1.2 on exhibit A, I would, I would suggest maybe it says 10 days before the prior, before the council meeting. So that it's not locked into what day of the week council meetings are on. Just make it so we don't have to amend it if we ever change.
10 days prior to the council meeting? Okay, all right.
Excuse me, this is the town clerk. Can I just say that, uh, 10 days prior would be the same day. It would be that Thursday.
Yeah, why don't we just say 5:00 PM Thursday, two weeks prior to the council meeting? And so it's basically changing it of the week to say two weeks.
Okay, but that's, that's, I'm making it what, 15, let's.
But that gives the clerk time to arrange schedules, to hear back from people, et cetera. The application is not that hard. Okay, so I'm going to make the second, um, motion. And we'll see what happens. Uh, I make a motion to adopt a resolution amending the interview and appointment policy to amend the process for the tree committee with two changes in exhibit A. And I believe I've already stated those. 1.2 would be two weeks prior to the council meeting. And under 3.2, the applicants will be required to attend a planning commission meeting. And if anybody wants to second that.
Sure.
Very good.
It sounds like we're ready to vote and figure out what, where we are on this. So I'll take a roll call on that. Um, council member Hellman, I mean, um, vice mayor Hellman, I'll start with you since you haven't stated. Okay, council member Cutrano.
Hi.
Council member caller.
Hi.
You made the motion. Renee?
I'm going to vote no.
I'm sorry. I'm ready. Okay. Thank you. With apologies to Renee, but we did get through it.
I don't think we have to agree on everything.
No, we really don't. It's, uh, all in good, with good respect.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, very good.
Go through that.
We did. Item 13 is to authorize the town manager to purchase two wooden play structures from Bear's playgrounds. And, um, if you can give a staff report on that, Garrett.
So as some background, back in 2018, the Parks and Rec and Recreation Commission began the process to design replacement structures for the two wooden children structures in Perry Park. Those wooden structures, I forget they're how they are. They're probably over 20 years old and they're really at their useful end of life. And so Park actually used volunteers to help come up with the conceptual designs. And they tried to model it after the play structure in, uh, Yaganitas. But in 2019, Park decided to really just focus more in the design for younger children's play structure. In Perry Park, that's the one that's probably closest to the building. It's a little, it's a little smaller. It has that little, little bridge. And so what they did was they retained designer to have, to help them refine the plans. In 2020, plans were finalized. We actually had them reviewed by a playground inspector. And so we had it plant checked. But what we really needed is we had to find a professional firm willing to sign the plans. Cause plans actually need to have stamped by a professional engineer, licensed architect, something like that. And at that time, rough estimate for the one structure was about 80 to $100,000. That was our rough estimate to put it out to bid. So fast forward 20, in 2020.
Excuse me, that's for the construction. That was the rough estimate for the construction, but you were still trying to sign off.
Right. It's 80 to 100,000 just for the construction. That doesn't include any of the soft costs it was for the, that we would need to pay for an architect to prepare the plans and specs, nor the structural engineer that we had review all the plans and, and so on. But, you know, obviously with COVID shelter in place, Park kind of revisited its approach, did some research on wooden structures. And they're really, their goal is to see whether or not it was possible to purchase and install two structures for the price of one. And so what they, what they discovered is they went through this process. So they discovered that a lot of non-wooden structures were actually just as expensive as the wooden structures. And in their research, what they settled on is what's attached, the staff report, which is wooden structures that are built by Bear's Playground. Um, there are two structures for both younger kids and older kids structures. Uh, Park actually believes the product actually best reflects the character of the town. It's reasonably priced compared to other vendors of similar products. What you have is what's attached is the quote for $102,000. $102,000 does include installation. Installation is about 34,000 of the 102. And then it also includes the surface area for the structure it did on. And as staff, because this is in blimry phase, phase in terms of Bears is actually going to have to come out, take a closer look at the site, see if they have to do any other changes. We added $10,000 for a contingency fund because as you move and do field conditions, you never know what's going to happen. Um, we're anticipating that we move forward with this. Demolition is either going to be done by town staff. We might have a separate contractor come in and do demolition. But our main goal here for putting this on is Park really wanted to move this up to the council sooner and later. So we're still working on some details, but what we're looking for is authority for $112,000, which includes installation costs. Your funding for this will be the Measure A Park funds that you set aside, set aside for the play structure in Perry Park. Park fundraised another $12,394. And so you were short about 20 grand and that would come from general fund reserves. And then the other action is appropriating 12,000 from the Perry Park equipment fundraising account and 20,000 from general fund reserves to the project number, which is Fund 51-841. So that concludes the staff report, available for any questions.
Um, just, uh, Garrett, I had asked and you thought you might have the information on, do we have any idea on the timeline? Cause I know several parents have asked me and their kids are getting older. They may not want to play there much longer. So, um, just wondering, um, what, if we have an idea yet?
Uh, I don't have a timeline yet. I do know that, um, our risk manager with an insurance company says the equipment's fine.
Wonderful. And I just want to send a thanks to Chris Bourgeon, who had did the research on this. I mentioned to him at the Measure A committee last time that could we consider at least for the structure we weren't going to have to get off the shelf? Cause it, you know, the work that Park did was just wonderful, trying to work with volunteers. But it just, kids were going to be going to college soon. So, um, it's really nice that he did the work and maybe some other members of Park. And based on what I see in the pictures, they look wonderful. So great. Thank you.
Any other council member questions before?
No, I mean, I'm just looking at these pictures and it looks awesome. So I'm, I'm just excited for this to get going since, you know, it's been a couple of years and whatever we can do to support it.
Yeah, one quick question, which is, uh, Garrett, I was wondering, um, the, is working with DPW or getting a contractor to demolish the current structures? Which of the two is cheaper? And do you have a sense of what that would be, what that would cost?
Well, using in-house staff is, is, is always cheaper because we don't have to pay a third party. Although that does mean you're doing this instead of something else. I have actually had no idea at this point what, uh, it would cost to have a contractor come in and take everything out. It's a little tricky because where you have to access come, come through the sand. Uh, and it, it may be easier just to bring our back hole in, we scoop it out and then we're done. So, but that's something we still need to figure out.
Got it. Great. Thanks.
Okay, any other questions? We'll bring in public. Okay, let's go ahead and do that. Michelle, would you, um, see if we have any public comment?
Yes, mayor. I don't see any hands raised at the moment, but we could just give it a minute. Oh, I see one. Okay. Uh, Mark Bell, you are unmuted now.
As I said earlier, I'm sure it's a good idea. I'm sure that play structure has been beaten and used and well-used. Uh, however, no one has seemed to address what's going on with the redwood trees in the park, which is just adjacent. So are the kids going to be playing on the structure as the logging crews go in and remove the redwood trees who died from your active refusal to do anything? Uh, that's my only question.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you, Mark.
And the next speaker is John Reed. You are unmuted, John.
Yeah, um, yeah, I mean, the last comment was, you know, kind of off the subject, but yeah, it, it seems that the main reason to have a, a community-built play structure is to keep, get people involved and have, you know, build community. And, um, it, it just seems disappointing that, you know, kind of we're going for the most economically expedient thing. Um, and it may well be that a lot of the people involved in trying to put together some community thing are not there because of COVID or, or whatever it is. It's, it's just, you know, I've always believed that it's been good for community to have people involved in doing some community barn raising thing. And, um, so I'm, I'm just disappointed to see it going in this way. And there may be very good reasons as articulated, but just had to put that in there.
Thank you, John. Yeah.
I don't see any more raised hands. If you want to close the public comment.
Okay, so we'll close the public comment. And I would actually like to respond to, uh, to what John said and, and in a way to what Marcus said about this and, and about another. That it, it, it is frustrating. I can, I'm not being critical of staff, but I see staff's position here. It's difficult to get things happening with using volunteers. And like John says, I, I would love to see that. The community barn raising is a great image. It, I find it sometimes surprising how, uh, things just work very differently in, in, in a government. And they also work very differently in any large organization. The larger an organization is, the more moving parts there are, the harder it is to do something that would be easy if it's just you alone. You know, we, every farmer just builds things, you know, and it's like a normal thing. And yet, when we try to do that as a civic, as a, as a town, sometimes that can be frustrating. So, um, the bus, the bus shelter, which I worked on, Chance worked on as well. Um, we actually did do a volunteer job and that worked, I think, pretty well. We put the roof on the bus structure, but the rest of the building of the bus structure, there was this series of, first, the first idea, as I recall it was, oh, don't buy a bus structure. We can build it. We'll build it volunteer. And then eventually that morphed over time into, it was a local person who did the design, but we were contracting out to actually build it. And, um, and so that, and that added some delay. Be, you know, that would have been quicker if we had said right at the beginning, we're just going to buy a bus structure. Now, as it is, I think that's a really beautiful bus structure and bus, bus, uh, uh, shelter. I, I think it came out really nicely. The design is nice. The construction is nice. I think the roof is nice too. But that's just me. Uh, but it's, it took a long time and it just strikes me. And I, I don't really have an answer to this, but it's something that strikes me in my current involvement late in my life. As I get involved with civic work, it's just a different world. And it's just odd and I, I just, I resonate with what John said, that it's, I'm not, I'm not, uh, I would be inclined myself to support the, what we've got proposed here in front of us because people want the play structures and want to get them moving. And this seems like actually the most cost-effective way to do it at this point. But it is, it still goes around in the back of my mind, why, um, why we, why things end up that it's just difficult to pull the community together and, and do something like this when we no doubt have a lot of carpenters in the community. I think part of it, I would guess, is just that, as Garrett says, you have to have an engineer sign, sign off on it. I mean, you, you can't just build something. You can't just go out in the park and hammer the thing together and say, all right, kids, you can start playing. Because we've got liability, we've got a lot of, it has to be an incredibly robust, incredibly well-designed thing. And there's probably a lot more than any of us know about, about designing a play structure that's going to be really safe. And there's no, not going to be any splinters in it. And there's just a lot of stuff that, you know, you have to think about. But it just is a puzzle one to me. It's really interesting how, and that's part of what I hear Mark, uh, being frustrated about is just the amount of, it seems like something ought to be really simple. And yet it just isn't in the, in the world of, in the world of, uh, having to do these things and having to do them the way they need to be and having to have liability and having to have all the sign offs. And it's just a lot more complicated than it looks like. I'm kind of musing, so I'm going to stop. Who else would like to speak to this? Or make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion.
That sounds good.
Okay, well.
Barbara?
Um, well, I, I've just had a lot of people talking to me about this and, um, all right, I would like to make a motion to authorize the town manager to purchase two wooden play structures from their playground in the total amount not to exceed 112,000, including installation costs and appropriate approximately 12,000 from the Perry Park Equipment Fundraising Account and 20,000 from General Fund Reserve to Fund 51-841.
I'll second. I'll second that.
Can I make a friendly amendment, just given all of the? Commentary we've gotten, if staff could seek opportunities for, you know, volunteer. And contribution in this effort, I think. There's, there surely got to be a way for some type of support from the community with regard to this. Construction and erection of the structures.
Thank you. Not that, I don't think, based on what I read of the plans, this is not a construction project. They bring these projects, they bring this in, they're going to install them and create the surface area. So I think we've run into this, having worked on the best shelter project for quite a long time. We don't have the ability for this particular project to bring volunteers in. So at this point, I would not accept that friendly amendment. I think there's other projects in town.
We let Garrett respond to that?
How about this? It doesn't have to be amendment, but I know Park's always trying to look a way to get volunteers. Involved with the project, but it's not going to actually be with the construction installation.
Yeah.
Or the surfacing, because that's a contractor. But I'll talk to Park about ways that somehow. We can get the community involved as part of this project, but it won't be actually building this thing. It could be something related to the park, though.
Okay, thank you.
So that sounds good, but that's not an amendment.
That's not. Part of this, yeah.
Okay, so, thank you, Stephanie. So the motion stands.
So we have a motion in a second. That's caller and Cutrano. And we'll take a roll call vote. I'll go ahead and do that. Councilmember Goddard.
Yes.
And Councilmember Koller.
Yes.
Councilmember Cutrano.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman.
Yes.
And myself, I'll vote yes. Okay. Congratulations, Garrett. We're going to. Move forward on the play structures. Now, we have our last, no, we don't have our last item because we have one more that we brought from the. From the consent calendar, but our last regular item on the agenda is item 14. This is a Climate Action Committee initiated this, brought a request to us to consider it. And tonight is just, we're just discussing it and considering it. And giving direction to staff. Garrett, would you want to begin with a staff report on this?
Sure. As you indicated, the CAC, your Climate Action Committee. Is requesting the council, is direct staff prepare an ordinance to ban natural gas in new residential developments. Mayor Ackerman, Vice Mayor Hellman are your representatives to the CAC. CAC did report numerous California communities have adopted such ordinances to reduce greenhouse gases. There are over 40 in California that have variations of these type of ordinances. Whether it's health and safety code, whether it's building code, whether it's just for new, whether it's new and existing, whether it's residential, commercial. So there's a lot out there to take a look at. So in January, at the CAC meeting, we actually had the county of Marin come make a presentation on the building energy codes. That was the approach that the county adopted. What they did was they adopted an electric preferred approach for residential only. That gave that allowed depending if for new construction in their definition is 75% demo or more. Allowed the applicant to decide if they wanted to go all electric and there are certain energy standards, didn't have to do anything more. Or a mixed use, which is additional, and that had to do with cooktops and fireplaces. The most, one of the interesting things the county said is they found when they were doing this. That their residents were really felt very strongly about the cooktops and the gas fireplaces. Not so much about the furnaces or the water heater. And so that's why they created the limited mixed fill. And then they have mixed fill, which you could do any type of natural gas, but you have to make, do additional, meet additional energy standards. So. Their approaches to both, there's the energy reach coach approach, and then there's the just banning natural gas. Maybe in another spot, maybe in health and safety code, or however you want to do it. So normally, energy reach codes are very labor-intensive. Because ultimately, not only do you have to create it, then you have to go and get get approval from the California Energy Commission. So. But what the county indicated to us, since they've done all legwork, if we were to in essence adopt their model ordinances. Then their study to Energy Commission would still be valid and we could use all their stuff and they would help us and you could go through that process. Now, they also pointed out that every three years you adopt new building code, which includes energy, energy standards. Next time around is December 22. So it could be by the time you're all said and done. You have this in place for less than a year and then you have to go back and update everything for the new building code. Now, regarding a ban on natural gas, lots of communities have done so. Some have been, a few have been subject to challenges. But there's lots of variations in that. And I think ultimately, I think as staff, our approach would be depending on which way the council is leading. We would come back with you with some policy questions because a ban on natural gas, if you went that route. There are exceptions. A lot of communities have exceptions. So it'd be good to hear. Are you open to some of these things, whether it's ADUs, whether it's affordable housing, whether it's a certain size? It'd just be good because there's so many different things out there of how different communities are trying to handle that. Obviously, be working with the town attorney to come back with some of that. Now, on the other hand, if you thought building reach codes are the way you wanted to go. Then maybe it'd be helpful to have the county come in and make a presentation. Easiest thing for us to do is adopt what they did and that saves us a lot of work other than, again, figuring out. How to incorporate that in our building code, in which case, again, that's another town attorney task. So really, what we're looking for tonight is a little guidance on where. The town council wants to go when it comes to the recommendation from the CAC of banning natural gas and new residential developments. That's my understanding of the CAC was thinking they should apply to commercial, then that's completely. Other discussion, then you would, you know, you would have to see if that's it. And then obviously, there's different exceptions to the rule there. Ultimately, we'd have to come back with. So really, first step is deciding generally what you want to do. Knowing that we're going to have to come back to you with all these different policy issues. So we can craft what you think it's, what you think you would like to see for the community. So that's the staff report.
Yeah. Thank you, Stephanie.
Um, yeah, thank you, Garrett. So I, so this is complex, right? And as you said, we had. Dana, and I'm forgetting her last name. Is it Arminia?
Dana Arminia.
Thank you. Come to our last Climate Action Committee meeting and. If memory serves, she recommended, just from a timing standpoint. Her statement to us is that if we don't adopt the reach code. To take effect now, we should adopt all-electric code now. And we, when we were discussing the all-electric. I thought we were talking about the San Francisco model, which is all-new residential and commercial. Bruce, can you back that statement? Were you surprised that commercial was not included in the staff report?
I'm actually afraid I'm not clear. Now, Walt is in the audience and he may be able to help us with this as to whether the commercial. I'm embarrassed to say I'm not quite clear on whether commercial was thought of, but as far as residential, yes, I agree with what you said that we. The CAC, well, go ahead. You finish. I'll talk.
Okay. Do you recall the San Francisco discussion?
Yeah, San Francisco, as I understand, San Francisco has adopted. The idea that for new construction, that it would be, that it would be no natural gas. And there, one reason that that, that that makes sense is because there's a considerable savings in construction cost. So if you're building a new building and you don't bring gas plumes through it at all, if you don't have a gas meter at all. Then that saves a considerable amount on the construction. Whereas if you say, well, we'll have gas for just a little bit. Well, you still have to bring all the gas infrastructure in. And also, one of the things that's been learned about, and some of our public comment that we got by email points this out pretty eloquently. One of the things that has been learned in in recent years about natural gas is that its. Biggest effect on the climate is actually the gas itself that leaks throughout the system. And so, including in a building. So if you have a little leak somewhere in the building. That is, that's happening, no matter, even if you're not using the gas, even if you quit using it, but you've got that gas. Structure in the building and you've got the meter and you've got the gas line running from the street and you've got all those connections. And so by just saying, don't do gas anymore. And looking forward to the fact that we will, we know that we have to, as a society, get off fossil fuels. That is a daunting thing to think about and none of us can quite wrap our heads around how we're going to do it. But if that's where we're going, then let's begin by not building any more buildings that have fossil fuel infrastructure in them. So that, that, as I recall, was basically the consensus of the CAC. Twice over, really, once when the CAC produced the resolution to recommend this to council, that was in December. And then again, when Garrett and Dana visited CAC and we re-discussed it, and that was very helpful to have that visit. And we did have a. But we ended up deciding to reaffirm the resolution and go back and ask council to just do the natural gas thing. But you can go on if you have any further to add. That was.
I don't, I'm good for now.
Yeah. Before I speak anymore, I'd like to hear from other council members, Barbara.
Um, I had some questions, which I suppose I can wait on. But one thing that I feel really unclear on. Is I'm glad that the county came to the CAC meeting and presented reach. I would certainly feel more comfortable hearing that presentation. And it's just, maybe that's a comment I should have waited on, but I feel really. Like I would like to know more and. Maybe I see Chance nodding his head, but I just feel more comfortable knowing more about what the reach codes. And the fact that the county's done the heavy lifting, which was the reason why we didn't adopt them or go for them at the time, because it was so much work. But never really knowing the details of it. So that's just a thought. And I do have some specific questions, I guess. When we bring it back or maybe some comments. Thank you.
We will be going to the public on this, so we're kind of asking questions to clarify at this point, get the, get the history and so forth, right? Chance?
Yeah.
Before Chance goes, maybe I could just say a couple of things that are questions in my mind is. How are we defining residential development? I have a little concern over just every new house doing that. I think where we're building completely affordable housing, where we do something like Victory Village in the future. Looking at the cost that that might entail. Also, because we live in an area where we're subject to these PSPs. And also even this year, we had a power outage of about two and a half days. If you don't have natural gas stove or water heater. You have no cooking ability and no hot water. And even for those who have solar with battery backup, maybe I'm wrong, but I thought battery backup the most you could get out of that was about 12 hours. So that doesn't get you to a few days. So that kind of troubles me. And one of the things I want to avoid is. More people buying even more generators because they're very concerned about. You know, not having some of these things during those events. And just sort of what are, I think Garrett answered some of the questions on the types of exemptions that we'd be looking at. But I also saw a letter from the pool and spa group. And I also did a little research just based on that letter. I couldn't find. All-electric pool and spa heaters. I don't know how many pools and spa we have in Fairfax, but. It seems like that might be before there's really a viable alternative. We need to take those things into consideration. So those are just some of the questions that I have, but really, I'd like to learn more about the reach from the county. Thank you. Sorry for interrupting, Chance.
No worries at all. And I think to your point about the affordable housing thing, my understanding is that it's, it's cheaper to do all-electric development. From the get-go and to have all the hookups and infrastructure for gas. But my, my question is just for Garrett, actually, and maybe for the two reps to the Climate Action Committee. So to be clear, because I glanced at the supplemental. The Climate Action Committee's recommendation to us is. All-electric required for new development, new development versus electric preferred? Is that the?
That was the CAC actively discussed that after Garrett and Dana came to the last meeting and. And decided to reaffirm the preference for the all-electric. And that is sometimes done actually in a different way in the code. That is sometimes done. I think San Francisco has done it this way through a health and safety code as opposed to through the building codes. But it's inherently simpler from a code point of view. It just, you don't, if you're building a new building. Or at least a certain class of buildings, like maybe residential, single-family, or whatever that class is. That there's just no gas hookup at all. You, we're done with gas.
Got it. Next, just another question, and it's something that I think Garrett touched on maybe. But was, so when, when Dana from the county, she's with Community Development Agency, is that right? When she presented, which was why I was nodding my head, it sounded like a great presentation that the public should see if we're discussing this. It sounded like she recommended if we weren't immediately enforcing something. That she too agreed with the recommendation that the Climate Action Committee is bringing forward, which is not electric preferred, but is the all-electric. Is that also correct?
Well, I think if it's, I think what she was saying is you go through the exercises of reach codes. By the time you have it adopted, you're going to have to update them again. Not sure what that would take. But if, for some reason, under the building code in 2022, if energy code is switched and they adopt something similar. To some kind of, I'm making this up, if they're leaning toward some type of ban on natural gas or something at a higher level. You're going to have to redo all your code anyway. And I think my take on what she was saying is. You only want to avoid having to do that, and you may end up in the same place, maybe you ought to just go through the banning. Of natural gas now in in your new developments, go for there. But now, you gotta remember, the county's code only applies to residential. So that's why I just thought the request was just toward residential. And I didn't say anything about commercial. So if it's commercial, that's fine. I'm just letting you know why. The staff report said residential because the county reach codes only addressed residential.
Right. I will say that she was very forthcoming that Fairfax needs to do something. She really strongly recommended we take action soon and. Yeah, her, we have her deck. We, we could share it publicly now and. So let's do that ASAP. And. I just learned that it's part of the minutes that we discussed it as. Joanne is our secretary and she did capture it, that we were talking about. All buildings, residential and commercial in the context of San Francisco. So, I mean, we should talk about that after we take public comment.
Can I ask one more question, too?
Yeah.
Which is. Uh, whi- which is uh, to Garrett, um, and this might be premature, but uh, it's a question to you. So uh, should uh, we move forward with pursuing something like this? What's the, how quickly can we get some, I mean, this is, this is an urgent thing. The climate crisis is an urgent thing. How quickly could we get something before us um, based on your workload and whatnot?
I think that i- if you want us to actually, i- if you say, I'll make this up, if you say San Francisco only, then that's what we look at. We'd come back to you with policy decisions related to what San Francisco has. Cause I thought in theirs, they had exceptions for the different buildings and, and situations. But San Francisco obviously is a lot more complex than what they deal with with buildings, right? But if you said, well, take a look at some others, then that's also more work because there's 40 plus others out there. And what exactly am I looking at? Is it, well, rather than a mandatory, are there some electric preferred ones that some places have? That don't ban it, but come close, but it's on the energy REACH codes. So it just all depends on how much information you want to make this decision. I think from a stock perspective, you're going to want to know kind of what's out there. Just so you can know, you could try to craft something. Did you think we're expects for us? I mean, I get it. It's probably a little late for REACH codes. Um, San and Selma, Mill Valley, I think adopted them, but you know, if you have them in place for two years, it's probably a lot more beneficial than having them in place for less than a year. So I, I think that's the dilemma is how much work do we need to come back to, to get that policy direction? Then that part's easier once we know what you think you want. Cause the last thing we want to do is come to you with something and you go, well, why is that in there? We, I, that's a bad idea. And so we like to have that discussion ahead of time. And like I said, I think for San Francisco, we probably pull out some stuff that we don't think is applicable. Like, you know, sky rises and whatever else they have in San Francisco.
Got it. Thanks.
Bernie, questions?
Yeah, I just
I think when we hear from the public, we might get some of the information clarified. So
Just a clip that I need, I'm wanting some clarification in staff reports. So on the second page, Garrett. So in that second to last paragraph, you say that uh, however presumably the process to adopt such an ordinance, meaning all electric or banning natural gas would be more streamlined than adopting building energy REACH codes. So streamlined meaning a faster process or because it sounds like what we're looking at is with REACH codes, the county could pretty much hand us theirs. Um, with the all-electric, San Francisco has something, but so, so what are we, what, what are you talking about in terms of it?
And actually it's San Francisco and a number of other jurisdictions. There are quite a few that have, that have the
Yeah, no, I understand. I, I'm just curious about what you mean here.
Well, I, I think the, it was kind of a catch-all. So depending on what you did, if you put in health and safety code, depending what you did, it's probably easier than going through the REACH code process. Uh, because the one thing on the REACH codes is even if you adopted everything in the county once, you still send it off to the Energy Commission for approval. Maybe that only takes, I think Dana said it probably took less than 60 days, but that's an extra step before your ordinance can actually take effect.
So San Francisco's didn't have to do that, right? They didn't have to take it to the CEC?
Well, I'm guessing
Health and Safety Code. So then my last question is, if they didn't have to do that, what happens with that in SEQA?
SEQA is a different question that we'll have to answer depending on your approach.
Okay.
Okay. So let's go to the public and get some, some more input on this. So Michelle?
Yes, I'm here. Um, so we have right now three speakers. Norma Fragoso, Beth Vertical and Robin Muller. So Norma, you are unmuted.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, Norma Fragoso, uh, as you know, but I am speaking to you this evening as a private resident and not as one of your planning commission members. I'm here to encourage the town council to as aggressively as possible, move forward to implement policies and building codes that absolutely require energy efficiency in new construction and major rehabilitation of both commercial and residential properties to include a ban on gas and in fact, a requirement for solar for all electrical needs in new construction and major remodel. If the town council expects to meet its goal of greenhouse gas reductions by 2030 as adopted in their proclamation, these steps must be taken now. I think it's kind of meaningless to talk about how much work is it now? How much work is it later? It needs to happen now. Further, these energy standards, I believe, could also be incorporated into the town's objective development and design standards and general planning, housing, environmental and energy and conservation elements to give them a more solid uh, policy basis and uh, legal standing in terms of a standard for Fairfax. Uh, thus providing long-term sustainability and environmental protections for our community. The time is now and maybe even time to ban generators uh, sometime soon thereafter. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Norma.
Speaker is Beth Vertical. You're unmuted.
Thank you so much. Um, there are three points I'd like to make. Number one is I'm sure you've gone over, but just to reiterate, the proposal that we're talking about is for the health and safety code. It's a completely different kind of code structure. And this brings me to the germane issue, which is global warming is a health and safety issue. It's much bigger than just our little tiny worlds wanting to cook something on a gas stove. We have to start getting way above all of this and start driving the conversation on much bigger levels. Banning natural gas is beyond a building code issue. It's a health and safety issue. In addition to gas leakage, which you've mentioned here, thank you. We're talking all natural gases fracked at this point pretty much, and that is a surge in the methane over the last decade of being in our atmosphere. And methane, I don't know if you all know this, but it's 85 times more powerful than carbon dioxide as a greenhouse gas. So although it's not really talked as much about in the news, because everybody's doing carbon dioxide equivalent gases metrics, methane has been a huge contributor. So um, natural gas is directly linked to that, according to many scientists. Um, and I don't know about you guys, but I personally ordered my filters for my respirator for this upcoming fire season. So the emergency is at our doorstep. It is not a time to backslide and think, oh, let's just accommodate a few new building builders. This is a time to take a stand and lead the way. We think we're thought leaders and it's time that we just put it down on paper and move forward. And I also offer that council can watch our meeting. We record all of them and this one was a juicy one. So um, if you want to watch it, it didn't take too long and it moved along pretty quickly. Um, I also personally offered to provide Garrett with a report because I know Walt did a heck of a lot of research on which cities had adopted it, their findings and all of that stuff. Garrett said that he would represent what he thought was needed to you. And I will say respectfully that he did omit quite a bit. And so um, before you make any decisions, I do encourage you to watch the town, our meeting or at least ask Walt for a report. And I would also like to offer, moving forward, that we would like to make reports that are pretty well-rounded. We do our research. We take this seriously. And we would like to submit those to council so that we don't have to say somebody forgot something that we would have rather had included. Thank you.
Thanks, boss.
The next speaker is Robin Muller, followed by Walt Vernon. And Robin, you're unmuted now.
Hi, uh, this is actually David Muller. Robin's my wife. And uh, I'd like to start first of all by saying I submitted uh, some written comments uh, that I was going to basically go over right now. Uh, but instead I'm going to try and answer some of the questions that the council members have raised. So I'd like to ask that you each take the opportunity to read my short written comments, so I don't have to cover those things right now. So there were some questions. I, I'm actually quite familiar with the topic uh, that's being discussed here. I've worked for a couple of years now with the Marin-Sonoma Building Electrification Squad, and I've made a point of becoming quite educated uh, on these topics about all gas ordinances, all kinds of all. And I've reviewed many, many of them of many jurisdictions. So let me see if I can answer some of the questions. Uh, first of all, the San Francisco All Electric Ordinance, which was passed just last November, uh, is under the state's Health and Safety Code. That's the state code that provides the jurisdiction with authority to pass an ordinance like this. A totally separate path is to use the state's energy code, and those are what are called REACH codes. So it's two different paths to get to an all-electric building ordinance. The reason to use San Francisco's is it's a rather state-of-the-art thing. It uh, does apply to all building types, the San Francisco one does. But it does have some exceptions, like it allows gas for buildings that have uh, commercial kitchens in them, as just as an example. You can read the ordinance. I've read it several times. It's fairly short and it's very clean. It's a great example to use. One of the differences between these two paths, going the Public Health and Safety Code versus the Energy Code, is if you go to the Public Health and Safety Code, it does not require approval of the California Energy Commission. So I'm just saying, and it doesn't require uh, re-establishing the ordinance every three years. So there's lots of reasons to go the Public Health and Safety Code path like San Francisco did. Uh, both approaches require a SEQA analysis, but most jurisdictions find that the ordinance is not going to have a significant effect on the environment. Uh, so that's usually the findings of that goes. You may have heard there's some recent lawsuits out there, Windsor and Santa Rosa. I've been very involved with the Windsor case, not so much Santa Rosa. That lawsuit was on the basis of the SEQA analysis. Windsor withdrew not based on the merits of the challenge, but they simply didn't have the money to fight it. Now, you might have that same concern, but what you might not know is that in the case of the Santa Rosa uh, litigation just this last week, the judge in that case issued a tentative ruling that concluded that the basis of the suit is not persuasive. In other words, he's going to turn down the suit. That's going to be a great precedent for every other jurisdiction that wants to go that path. And I believe that by going the path of a, uh, using the Public Health and Safety Code like San Francisco did, if somebody challenges you under that, you're going to have some pretty broad shoulders to stand on because a challenge to that same approach to another jurisdiction puts San Francisco's ordinance at risk as well. So I'm just saying, going the path of using the Public Health and Safety Code seems to have a number of advantages. Doesn't mean you won't get sued, but you've got some broad shoulders to stand on. So uh, I just want to say, uh, one last thing. I really think it, uh, Dana was totally on target. I've talked to her extensively about this. Uh, that going with the county's green building code, it's not a step backwards, but it's not much of a step forward. It will become almost immediately obsolete. There's a chance here to really take the step the right direction, and I strongly urge you to ask staff to proceed to prepare a report. There's a lot, a sample ordinance, there's lots of examples uh, to, to build on. I'd be happy to provide some guidance on that uh, and answer any other questions you have about this. I see my three minutes is up, so I'm going to stop. But uh, I do hope you'll take a look at my written comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. And, and that email was much appreciated as well. I hope that we can find a way to bring some of this uh, knowledge into the process so that we can get clearer on all the different options and really look at what other, what other jurisdictions are going. And uh, there are a lot. So let's go on to uh, next commenter, please. Michelle.
The next commenter is Vernon, you're unmuted. Walt?
Yep. And this time I got to the mute button fast enough. I should have five minutes though, not three, because I'm representing the Climate Action Committee. You know, the first thing I'll tell you, actually, I, I bought my house here in Fairfax about six years ago. And it actually had um, an electric hot tub, a 20-year-old electric hot tub. So I don't know what these people are talking about. No problem. You know, I, I do want to reflect that about two years ago, actually, the Climate Action Committee passed a resolution asking the town council to adopt the Marin County REACH codes for exactly the reasons that Garrett pointed out. Um, you know, a- at that time, the county had provided the cost benefit analysis, the model ordinances, they had staff people on, on uh, available to us. And, and so we did recommend going with the REACH code. But now we're a year and a half, two years later, and it's too late in waiting for that. Beth is right. We did record our meeting and Dana's point to us was, as David just said, that every three years, if we do the REACH code thing, you have to redo it because the baseline resets against which you have to do a cost benefit analysis to a new REACH code. And she was very clear that if you weren't going to get it done, you know, anytime soon, just go for all-electric because that's the direction the county was probably going anyway. Um, I, just a couple of other issues to sort of point out. The issue of the streamlined thing that uh, Garrett talked about, and he is right. And, and it's as David suggested, if we were to go with the REACH code, the REACH code has to be approved by the California Energy Commission. So there is this extra step. And that's the part that the county has helped us to do because you're required to do a cost benefit analysis at the time you do that. And so they've performed the cost benefit analysis and it is available to us. So we would be able to take advantage of that and certainly um, that would help. But by the time we did that, we would be within the timeframe in which Dana said, just go all-electric. So uh, Bruce was correct when we talked about this in December. Well, maybe I should even back up and say, at the Climate Action Committee, you know, we, we had suggested the REACH code. And what we were hearing was, well, the REACH code is complicated to get uh, approved. It's complicated and once it's approved, it will take, will be complicated to enforce. And because of that and the time duration, we said, all right, let's just go all-electric because that's simple and streamlined. There are examples in the world, such as San Francisco, which are very easy to use. Um, it's a much easier ordinance to enforce as well as adopt. And so for all kinds of reasons, uh, it, it made a lot of sense to us. And so we did unanimously um, recommend that you proceed with the all-electric code. Uh, let's see if there's anything else I wanted to say. Oh, one other quick thing, you know, if you and, and I think Beth made a really good point that it is true, you guys want to hear a lot more information. And in some ways, uh, we've been gathering that information for two years. And so we sort of have it and just need an audience in some ways to be able to talk to you. Uh, and, and somehow that would be great if we could figure out how to do that better, I suppose. Um, I did have conversations actually with the Bay Area Air Quality Management District this week. The Bay Area Air Quality Management District is another governing entity which has jurisdiction over us. They actually are looking at regulations right now that would kick in within a five-year timeframe that would prevent the sale of natural gas-fired water heaters and natural gas-fired space heaters. Because this is a, a major cause of greenhouse gas emissions in our county. Now, that's something that would not be a building code. It would not be anything else. It would be an air quality management thing. And you know, to, to Beth's point, I think the idea that we start preparing the residents here for what is coming, no doubt, I think will, will really help our town residents rather than uh, continuing with the natural gas regime. The last thing that I will say, just by way of clarification is um, our recommendation was all construction, new construction, right? We were not talking about existing buildings. So all the people have stoves out there right now. We're not talking about them. Although the Air Quality Management District may at some point, we were talking about new buildings, so we don't make the problem worse. So uh, by the way, Jody had to go to bed. So she said she uh, seconds everything I say and that you guys should definitely proceed with the all-electric code. So thank you.
Can, can I have a quick question of Walt Mayer?
Yes.
Um, Walt, did you say um, that the Bay Area Air Quality Management uh, District was talking about um, water heaters and gas-powered stoves? Or gas-powered fireplaces?
Sorry, space heaters, space heaters. It's space heaters and water heaters. I'm, yeah, that's what I Yeah, that's what I should have said.
A house furnace, yeah.
Okay, and when you talk about all new construction, don't we have to look at the whole picture of remodels and whether it's 50 or 75%? I don't think anyone's looking at 50, are they?
Not well, Mill Valley is, but they're using the Reach Code. Here, as I understand it, our definition is that's a substantial remodel and does not trigger this. This is only new construction.
That's the Climate Action Committee's proposal, is that for the moment, we're talking about new construction, because we're thinking that that would be not so controversial. It doesn't really affect any current Fairfax residents, really. It's just affecting the next time someone wants to build a building on a lot, then that's when it would be affected.
But what about San Francisco's? Isn't it 75% remodel?
Well, it depends. It depends on how you define new construction. That really is the triggering issue, and to be honest, I don't know how they define new construction. But, you know, there will be an issue at some point, I'm sure, down the road, where the state or others will start to mandate.
Right, but just for clarification, the Climate Action Committee is recommending only new construction, both commercial and residential?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for everything.
Sure.
Yeah, and Renee, we did have a long discussion around remodels and the 50%, and I think because it would be more palatable to the community right now for new only. But I would like to start thinking about that for the remodels. And I think from a policy standpoint, we need to figure out how it would be a clean trigger, because what I heard that night is not exactly a clean trigger like they do in Mill Valley. I see Mr. Muller has his hand up again. He probably wants to respond, and I'd certainly like to hear what he has to say.
I would be happy to do that, if that's okay with people. I don't see any other hands, so... Michelle, would you let Mr. Muller back in?
Thank you so much. I should have been clever like Walt and asked for five minutes. Just real briefly, the issue on what triggers new construction is entirely up to the ordinance, up to the jurisdiction to define. So you could define it in a way that's consistent with the way you define it for other building permit purposes. The two other things I want to pass along, and I'm going to be really brief around this, is the way the San Francisco ordinance works is it simply says they won't issue a building permit for a new building that isn't all-electric. They never say we're banning natural gas. So people tend to call it a gas ban, but it never says we're banning gas. It simply says we're not going to issue building permits for buildings that aren't all-electric. So that's the way it works. The one other thing I wanted to offer up here is the issue of why act now? Like, why should Fairfax do something now and not just wait till the state picks it up at the statewide building code or for new appliances? Why not wait till the Bay Area Air Quality Management puts some sort of emissions restrictions on, you know, gas appliances? There's something that you're probably aware of, I'm sure you're aware of, that I think is a big driver here, and that is this issue about the California Department of Housing and Community Development requiring a lot of new residential development, residential units in the state of California, and ABAG now assigning to each jurisdiction in the Bay Area additional units and putting timeframes in for that. So here's the scary thing. I haven't actually looked up to see what Fairfax's allocation for new housing units is. I'm in Larkspur, just to put it in order of magnitude. In the next 10 years, almost 1,000 new dwelling units for Larkspur is what's being mandated. I don't know what it is for Fairfax, but I'm sure it's at least in the hundreds.
491.
We're quite aware of it, yes.
Yes, we're very aware of it.
Okay, all I'm saying is, right now, if a developer came in and said, okay, I'm going to be your developer to help you meet that, right now, you have nothing in place to make sure that those... How many units did you say?
491.
Okay, you have nothing in place to make sure that those 491 units are all-electric. And just stop and think about something that Mayor Ackerman said at the beginning. This is partly, I mean, the real driver here is don't make the problem worse. We know gas is a problem for climate change, public health, public safety. Don't make it worse, and we'll go back and deal with the existing housing. But with that pressure for all those new dwelling units, it's really important to act now and not wait. Thank you very much for the additional time.
Thank you, David. Yeah, the term for that, don't make the problem worse, is stranded assets. It's one of the big resistances to moving forward on changing our infrastructure so that we deal with what we need to deal with, is that people have spent money on existing infrastructure. If you buy a brand-new car, and then someone comes to you and says, you really should have bought an electric, well, you're not likely to say, all right, well, I'll just change right now, because you just bought a new car. You're going to want to use that for some years before you go buy another one. So the thing of when you stop buying the thing that we really need to get rid of and start doing the other one is really important, because it keeps on creating barriers to change. So trying to stop spending money on assets that are going to be stranded, because these things last a long time. Buildings last a whole lot longer than cars do. That's kind of a term for that, and it's pretty big on both the individual level, the corporate level, the government level, all these levels, we've got this problem of stranded assets. PG&E builds a gas-fired power plant, and you're like, come on, stop doing this. Okay.
Should we talk about direction to staff, like what we want to see come back?
Yeah, I think that's what we need to do tonight, is direction to staff. And part of that, sounds like it's having more information, such as we've been offered here. Just really looking at the options.
Can we, you know, I am just going to jump in, but at this point, from everything I've heard, all the emails I read, everyone's comments tonight, the recommendations of the Climate Action Committee, I'm looking at the fact that when we're talking about only new construction, really, not even looking at remodel, and it says, and I think I copied this off of one of the emails, actually, that said that, you know, the costs are less upfront and result in lower ongoing utility costs, and when coupled with clean electricity presents the possibility of zero... It's all good, and everything we're talking about leads me to not want to spend a whole lot of time coming back to looking at the Reach Codes, given where we are in the cycle of needing to update our Reach Codes, were we to even adopt any. I feel as though what I want to know is more information from our attorney. It seems to me that we have an amazing resource in Mr.... Yes, thank you, who has experience with what other jurisdictions have gone through. I've read a lot of the data, how many cities, and then how many lawsuits. Santa Rosa is such a promising case, that I don't need to have a full presentation of each of the options with all that I've learned, which I'm sure is quite elementary still. But I'd like to move forward on looking at what it would take for us to implement something like this, tailored, obviously, for Fairfax. I think there's no better time. I appreciate that the Climate Action Committee brought us Reach Code requests three years ago. I forget what Walt said. I remember it very well. But, you know, now is the time not to spend the next year reviewing different options, but to get the facts and see what it is that's most... What, you know, if we're vulnerable, then let's look at what we have to do to make ourselves less vulnerable legally. But I think that generally, this is what Fairfax does. We move forward on things. It's not inventing the wheel. There are precedents, and I think we know it's the right thing to do. And I really send my appreciation to the Climate Action Committee for your ongoing incredible work. I would like to see your reports. I know we're due for a summit, but thank you for all this. And I'm very excited about the fact that we can move forward, and I think we can do it safely, and I'm just all in.
Thank you, Renee. Any other comments on this?
I really appreciate those comments, Renee, and I completely agree. There's no business case here for the Reach Codes, particularly for our staff time and resources. And my only regret is that you don't have that deck that Dana shared with us. But you did have, you have Walt and Mr. Muller and those two experts in other emails that we've received. So hopefully you can trust that that is the case, that the county's sustainability leader has told us this. And we absolutely should pursue the San Francisco model, as far as I'm concerned. And, you know, Fairfax has been such a leader in this space, and I fear that we're sort of trailing now. And I'd like us to really pick it up a bit. So let's stop lagging and start being a leader again. So I appreciate your comments, Renee, and I'm in agreement.
I believe one of the parts of what, of the idea that we, as time goes on, it becomes more sensible to go with the all-electric than to do the hybrid approach that the county did, is because not only is there every three years a requirement to renew and redo the work for the Reach Codes, but also the county has a climate action plan as well, and their climate action plan is pointing toward that this approach that they're using right now is going to be, is going to give way to an all-electric approach, possibly in the next cycle of the codes. And so it's just, if that's the direction things are going, then as Vice Mayor Hellman said, it makes, it's putting a lot of our effort into doing something that would be complex, and within, pretty quickly, it would be obsolete. And that's something that the commenters have said as well. Other comments? Barbara?
So we just adopted the building code in December 2019. So it was, I believe it was November or so when the Climate Action Committee came to us. I personally was more interested in the Reach Codes, but I don't think the rest of the council is. And I think one of my reasonings is that it's not just about the council, it's about the broader community who may not be aware of this, and giving more information is always good. But given that, I don't see the sentiment going there. I think I would like to hear more than just one option, the San Francisco option, that may be the greatest thing, but I think we should allow staff the opportunity to come back to us discussing at least a few of the other options, not that they have to look at 40 of them, and also to talk about some of the things that Garrett mentioned in the staff report, about potential exemptions. I think I heard Walt Vernon say that the Climate Action Committee is looking at commercial and residential for only new construction. So if that's the case, it's a limited universe. Rather than even going into the idea of 50 or 75% remodels, because then we're talking about what if somebody loses their house in a fire? So you wouldn't necessarily want them to rebuild if they have one wall standing to rebuild to something different at already disadvantaged time. So I'd like to be able to give staff the opportunity to look into some of these other ones and bring those to us, and, you know, give us some information more about, are there potential exemptions we need to look at? And any other factors, some of which have come up tonight. So thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I respect Councilmember Kohler's comments on getting more information. I wonder if there's a way to expedite something like that, given what we've heard from Beth and Walt and...
Muller.
David as well, yeah. And I mean, I think it's clear to me of the options out there, which one seems to be the most expedient in terms of getting us toward our climate action goals and whatnot. And yeah, I just, I'm looking forward to moving quickly on this, but also providing the general public with enough information, of course.
And I just mentioned one thing. I mean, it seems like everything we do, we want to expedite. And so, you know, we have to be, I'm not saying I'm not for expediting, but it seems like everything we're doing is the highest priority. And so I think we can ask staff to do as streamlined as possible and come back to us as quickly as possible. But I think we have to be cognizant that it's going to take more than two weeks and maybe even one month to come back to us with something coherent that we can share with the broader community as well. So I'm glad we have some folks that really know this topic, and that's helpful. But even folks who don't know this topic probably want to weigh in on it as well. Thanks.
And I think, to clarify my notion of expediting, I think, you know, we have a lot of great experts on this Climate Action Committee and council members who have dedicated a lot of extra time to refining and polishing something that could be brought forward. And so I just want to make sure that we're honoring the fact that we have people that are dedicating so much time and coordinating with other external stakeholders to make sure that we're bringing something forward that is really getting us towards the goals that we want to get towards, and we're not just saying, okay, well, y'all did that, but now we're going to reinvent the wheel and, you know, keep kicking the can down the road, so.
Yeah. Okay, so I think it's time to kind of wrap this up. I'll make some comments here, kind of going last by convention. But as you all can imagine, I have an opinion about this, and it's kind of along the lines of what Renee said. Let's just move on it. And the, I think as far as the research, we definitely, we clearly all will feel more comfortable if we see a range of options as far as like how legally this is structured, and we get way in from our legal counsel as to what the legal ramifications are of every way that it's done. There are probably, I think, 40 or more jurisdictions that are doing this, that have already done this, but that doesn't mean there are 40 separate models. So I've seen that we've got some amazing expertise. In fact, just David Muller, who emailed us and spoke tonight, is, in my mind, a new person. I did not know him before, but here we have another person who has a lot of knowledge about this. I would like us to find a way to use that knowledge rather than just assigning it to staff to go figure it out and come back, because I agree with Barbara that we've got a lot going on, and we can't expedite everything. But one of the ways we can expedite it is by making use of another, of other people who can, who already know some of this stuff. So we need to really work on how we can make use of the resources, the human resources that we have out there to present us with that. And I would be happy to contact David and see whether we might be able to ask for his help, Walt's help. And I'll certainly pitch in with it to... And I'll certainly pitch in with it to come to come up with a report that shows kind of lays it out in a clear way where we can all look at it. These are the models. There's maybe three different approaches or however many there are, and then a few sub approaches. But and here's the experience they did and and here's model ordinance to look at for this one, this one, and this one that would be kind of best fits for us. That's the way a lot of ordinances happen, as we all know, is that different towns copy each other. As Stephanie said, Fairfax likes to be in the lead on things like this, and we're kind of not on this one. We there. This has been going on for a while and we haven't moved on it. So there's an advantage to that in that, okay, we do have models out there. We're not going to be the ones crafting the new ordinance. There's other ordinances out there. So let's take a look at them and see what we want to do. This shouldn't be that difficult. So I that's what I would propose, and I'd be happy to work on that. If anyone wanted to form a two-person subcommittee, that's fine. That's what we've been doing recently. But Stephanie and I are already the the Climate Action Committee liaisons and so forth. From a Brown Act point of view, if nothing else, that would probably be the two people if it were two people. So maybe Stephanie and I would be the subcommittee on that, or I'll just go for it. But I think we just need to pull together that information, bring that back. And I'm kind of proposing that instead of putting that mostly on staff's shoulders to pull together the information that we should be able to do that.
Yeah, I think Garrett's trying to talk, so I would love for him to do that. But I think Walt and this Mr. Muller have readily available this information and could act pretty swiftly to support a lot of what we're looking for. And I I can commit Walt as I talked to him earlier, so I'm comfortable volunteering Walt's and I don't know Mr. Muller, but I think he's a Larkspur resident, but I'm just really grateful he appeared this evening and he seems like a climate activist and just tremendously grateful that he showed up. And I don't know, Beth has her hand up. I don't think she wants to talk again, but go ahead, Garrett.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify exactly what it sounded like the mayor was saying was that it sounded like he was going to take the lead, maybe with the Vice Mayor, maybe with the CAC. Not particularly clear to me, but to come up and do research to look at ordinances and come up with policy decisions for the council to make related to the ordinance, what to include. You can attach ordinances that you like. But I will say how it has to work ultimately is with the policy direction and you can give staff an ordinance to draft up, we actually have to draft it up. That's consistent in our building code or not building code, but health and safety code. So there are going to be clear modifications to whatever we do. So I just want to make
Yeah.
No, I don't. I don't want the expectation, though, not so much of the council, you know, but of the community to say we said that one and you didn't do that one. You did something else.
The vision would be like, we like this one. Can you fit it to our standards?
So this is this is how to try to accomplish what you set out, Garrett, for us to do tonight, which is to just give you clear direction. This is what we what we want to do. But right now, we're we haven't quite been able to get to that point. We we could take a vote on it, but I would feel much more comfortable if we just all looked at something and had more of a consensus of what we could do. And so I'm thinking we look in more detail at what some of these things are and and then we can say, yeah, we like that one.
But when you say, sorry, Mr. Mayor, when you say we you mean collective council. So the thought pattern would be you and Vice Mayor Hellman, members of CAC, whoever volunteers you talk to are going to come up with something that you're going to put in a report that's going to come back to the council to say we like this, this, and this. Here's some policy decisions we like. And get guidance from the council. That that's the approach you're you're looking.
Because what I'm seeing now is the CAC already had this pretty robust discussion and twice over and and has earlier talked about reach codes and then that didn't happen. And so then decided let's change direction. Let's go. Let's make a make a proposal to council that we just do the all gas for new construction. And then you came with Dana and that was much appreciated. We got new information there as to what the county is doing. It's an interesting approach. And we discussed we discussed that and we decided on the CAC to just reaffirm our recommendation that we go with the all all electric for new construction. And so we we reaffirmed our our resolution. But now we've come to council, which is where we are today. And we're kind of having that discussion again. Well, maybe we should do that. Maybe we should do this. We still don't have all the information that we need. And we still need to hear from our legal counsel as we narrow down our options, what the what the concerns would be there. So.
I just, I'm sorry, and just to make clear, as staff, we're saying, we disagree, whatever you want to do, that's fine. I just wanted to point out that clear that staff's not doing anything until we receive a report back. Then we might have comments on it, but ultimately it'd be on the council's agenda with different policies to to talk about. I I just wanted to be very clear in what the staff role here, which is we're just waiting to get something. We'll pop something on the agenda with our comments. Now, I do know Janet, town attorney, has a couple of comments to me. If if that's okay.
Just. I just make one such. Oh, I was going to make one suggestion to make it easier because I think this is kind of confusing.
Um, yeah, go for it.
I was just going to say is why doesn't Bruce work with Walt to put together the report? I'm not sure that we need to involve someone from another town. We don't gave good comments, but we don't know at this point. And if Walt wants to reach out to Mr. Muller, that's A-OK. But why don't you guys give something to Garrett rather than and then he can work with you, Bruce, directly on you know, and you can reach out to the right folks to get the answer.
Are you not including me on purpose?
Um, I thought you didn't want to be included. You were talking about Walt and this other person. So if you both want to do that.
Thinking about working together on it. And Walt and Mr. They're they know each other. They work together.
That's great. Well, anyway, why not Bruce and Stephanie work with Walt to put together the information and send it to Garrett?
Um, can I ask a question, clarifying question? So when when we leave this item, are we pretty much decided that what we're going to collect information wise going forward from both attorney and the reports for various options is really just in exploring the all electric? So that we're not now going to bring back more information about potential reach codes. We're just going to focus on all electric and get get a get more information about that. Is that is that what the council?
Well, I can give my answer to that and I'll see what other people think, but the answer would be yes, I would love to just focus on that. If we're comfortable with making that direction right now as a council, then that simplifies it. We can look at information about what the all electric looks like. Maybe there's only one way that it's done. Maybe there's not, but we basically bring it back to staff and and see whether it's so clear that the next meeting, we actually have an ordinance in front of us, but maybe we at the next meeting, we have this discussion, but with the field a lot more narrow.
I just wanted to know if that was unanimous amongst us, that we don't want to bring back information about a little bit of everything.
It's a I wanted to pull a report about the landscape related to all electric ordinances and some of the implications and, you know, what's happening out there. And, you know, staff staff can talk about what we might need to think about with fair, you know, related to Fairfax. But, you know, Walt and CAC, we can put that together pretty quickly. It's it's, I mean, readily available.
I mean, if we have consensus about that, then maybe we're ready to just go directly to the to the next step, which is that staff puts together an ordinance. But that's what we were trying to do tonight was to ambitiously say, yeah, this is what we'd like. And then Steph works out the details.
I don't think we've got consensus on getting the ordinance right now.
Well, we we might we might have a majority.
Okay, well, can I just finish is that Bruce was talking about consensus. I backed off on the idea of asking for more reach codes, but what I really did want to see is more information at the council level to be transparent to the community at large about the various options and the issues we want to discuss before we put an ordinance together.
I agree.
That's fine.
So so just to clarify, Barbara, for you, that is that including like a primer on what the county did? Is that including how Berkeley approached theirs, where they use their policing powers to do their their gas ban or like, is is that the the range or?
Okay, I already, excuse me, I already backed off on asking what the county presented, which was the reach. What I'm talking about is have some options of the variance, various ordinance out there. And what the recommendation is, is the one we use as our model with some tweaks for Fairfax based on what the Climate Action Committee was asking for, which was only for new construction for residential and commercial. And it may be that some of the others did not include commercial. But that's kind of, does that make it more simple or am I just being too confusing?
I just want to see if you want, like, if you're okay with if this group comes back, which is essentially like the CAC, right? But, uh, representatives of the Climate Action Committee, if they come back with a series of all electric ordinances that have been done and they're like little tinkerings, if that will be okay for you.
Well, I so I'm not thinking that we need to see a list of 40. And I think we need to look at, are there three sort of models out there that make sense? But let's you know, I don't want to see a laundry list that Berkeley and Santa Rosa and Windsor and somebody else did one. I want to get a little bit more information on what they're about, where they've run into problems potentially for a few of them.
That's what I that, yeah, exactly.
And then what the parameters are that we're considering. So we present that
Exactly.
community. And that would be the next meeting when that information's ready and staff has time to work on it and put in the policy implications that we would have to consider.
I get it.
Yeah, and I I think I would I'd actually second that ask. And it sounds a little bit broader than the one that's just like, you know, what what are the couple all electric ones? But something, it would be great to have something from the Climate Action Committee reps and the council reps and staff that shows at least enough diversity to help help everybody understand why the and I think it's been clarified a bit tonight from the the guests as well, but something that really clarifies in writing why the all electric is is the preferred recommendation from the Climate Action Committee and would would be helpful, something in writing for the public that's posted.
If if I can just really make sure that I'm clear, Chance, on what what is broader than you said, it's slightly a broader thing that we're asking for than just.
Well, it sounded like like Councilmember Kohler was speaking to deficiencies or weaknesses or maybe potential things with triggers or things like that in the various ordinances that could be brought forward. And I don't know if that's weaknesses in how Berkeley approached it versus how San Francisco approached it. But I think that that's what I'm thinking of in terms of the breadth and depth of of ordinances that we could do. I mean, it doesn't sound like we have to, it doesn't sound like the county's the thing, but yeah.
Yeah. So what I was hearing is that we're interested in both commercial and residential, but only new construction. And interested in all electric as opposed to the hybrid approach, you get to trade off greater efficiency for having some gas that we're interested in the all electric. But within that parameter, we're interested in getting to see what are the different approaches that have been taken, which I think there are different approaches because this is all moving in time. And so one city tries one thing and then another city tries it a different approach, what has been learned and what what's sort of the state of the art as far as do you do it within health and safety or, as you said, police practices or, you know, you can do it within reach codes. I mean, it's not that a reach code can't be all electric. You could have a reach code that says it has to be all electric, but then the you have to go through the CEC. It has to be redone every three years. So that sort of thing to accomplish that thing, commercial and residential, new construction, all electric. What are the approaches that we have to look at so that we can look at them at a at a council level and say, we like this approach? And then staff can work the details. Yeah. Is that what I I'm just checking. Does that sound like to everybody what it is that we want?
That sounds good. And I think also one of the things that you brought up, I believe, here was the idea that building an all-electric building is more cost effective to build is important for people to know.
Hmm. Yeah, yeah. Okay, Garrett, did you indicate that Janet actually had something she wanted to say to us now or is that for later on as we do?
I don't I don't know. I think based on your recent discussion, I think it's a little more clear. You're talking about approaches and some of these things you take into consideration. So I I think I think I think that's fine. I'll give staff and the attorney time to offer comments and input on what we think is the best approach, that approach, whatever that exact approach.
Yeah, as we as we lay out other options, then that's when we can talk about, you know, get drill down to more detail about, again, comparing those options. Okay. All right. Thank you all. I I'm really glad that we got to this tonight. I was a little worried about it being at the end of the agenda. We still have one more thing that we continued. But or that we, you know, postponed. But I really appreciate this with all of you. I realize that these are scary big things. But it's a scary big thing. What's going on? The there's crazy stuff going on on the on the planet and we really see ourselves as a community that should be in the lead. So here we are and it's tough. It's late at night. We're thinking about big things, but that's just the way it is. Okay, thank you all. And we now have to go back to, which was it? Number?
Seven.
Was it number? Seven. I'm losing my agenda here. There we go. Okay. So number seven was adopting a resolution authorizing application for and receipt of local government planning support grant program funds. And we have a report on that from Garrett.
Sure. Quickly, what this really is, it's a grant application to the state funding $65,000. It's not competitive to fund the cost to update your housing element. It's the local early action planning grants called LEAP, and that's paying for the updated $65,000. Now, a condition of this funding is you have to adopt the HCD template resolution, which we attached. And what I was going to point out is you may recall back in 2019, we did a similar type of resolution for the SB two grant for $160,000. And while in 2019 in June, we adopted a resolution that wasn't the template resolution, we did some modifications to it. HCD pretty much rejected that resolution. And then we came back to the council in February 2020 to adopt the resolution and HCD said we had to adopt, which is their template resolution. So that situation applies this resolution also. So if you I guess the best way to describe it, if you think you want to modify this resolution, obviously as the council, you can. But I'm pretty sure what will happen is HCD will kick it back and we'll have to adopt it again if we want to receive the $65,000. And then Janet had let me know, she knows of one community that tweaked the resolution or modified it and HCD said, no, if you want the funding, you have to adopt our template. So that's I'm pointing out something since this resolution was included in your SB two resolution. It's it's a little different, but the reality is the money, you have to do your housing element anyway under law. You might as well. anyway under law. You might as well use the HCD money. You have to comply with your RENA numbers whether you like it or not. That's a different issue, because
That's a different issue.
housing element process first and see where you end up when you adopt it by 2023. So that's my staff report.
So essentially, we have this big thing ahead of us, a little farther down the road, which is that as the RENA numbers, well, the RENA numbers are, they just basically got finalized, right? So here we are, we've got that number, and it's a scary big number. And we're going to have to amend our housing element, redo our housing element, and somehow figure out what we're going to do about that, which I really don't know what that's going to look like. I don't think any of us do, because the number is just, we don't know where we would put them. But this is allowing us to apply for a modest amount of money, $65,000, that would just help us to do that work that we're going to have to do to work on the housing element. It's probably not even going to be enough to do it. But we're going to, we're saying this is what we have to do to apply is this, this, this detail here. And that's all this is, is just the application for that $65,000. That's, is that a fair restatement?
Yes, and it's not competitive. So you submit an application with the resolution, then you get the funding.
Yeah, yeah. So it seems fairly straightforward. Someone's offering us $65,000. We have to pass this little resolution. I don't see any downside. Is there, is there more to this that, that we should be hearing? Or is this, this is just this, this is kind of a straightforward bureaucratic step the council has to prove it?
I just have a question.
For Garrett.
Oh, go ahead.
I'm just wondering if I'm missing anything and why we, why we took it off consent, you know, it's.
Yeah, I can speak to that. But I'd like to hear from Vice Mayor Hellman first.
Yeah. Oh, sorry. I'd forgotten that you had pulled it. I, are there specifications on how the money must be used? Other than obviously using it toward the housing element. But I mean, do you, does it, does it need to be used by like staff or contract work? Or like, what do you?
I actually don't know if you could pay, use it to pay for staff. I think it's all for professional services.
So contract, contractors?
That's, I think that's, that's my understanding for all the different work that you'll need to do, because the housing elements, lots of data collection and other things. I mean, I, I could be wrong, but it's general enough that it's just all for the housing element.
Okay. Thank you.
So if I could jump in, I think there was some question, at least worth, worth discussing. The second whereas, you know, the town council of the town of Fairfax desires, dot, 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 preparation and adoption of planning documents and process improvements that accelerate housing production and facilitate compliance to implement the sixth cycle of the regional housing needs assessment. Just knowing that there's some concern in the community and in the Greater Bay Area about the, that last piece of it. Granted that we had similar language in that previous resolution that we passed that for the SB two money about accelerating housing development that the council unanimously approved, but facilitation and to facilitate compliance and implement the sixth cycle of the regional housing needs assessment was just some language that was, that stood out to me as knowing that there is so much concern. And so I just wanted to bring that up to council, not to necessarily modify it, knowing that if you modified it, and you kick it up to HCD, and then they kick it back and say, now you have to do, like, no, you need to use the boilerplate stuff if you want to work on it. The real thing I was thinking is perhaps we direct staff to include a cover letter that, that speaks to the similar sentiments about our concerns with the current numbers. But because here, you know, it just seems like the council would be, you know, working to facilitate and implement. But we should be drawing attention to those similar concerns about development in high fire risk zones and some of the things we brought up, or council brought up last fall in the letter to ABAAG. But that was just something that I wanted to bring up.
You know, I have a question. And Garrett, I don't know, I don't know if you would know this, but as the county and Mill Valley recently actually sent a letter opposing their RENA, I'm wondering if Mill Valley applied for this grant with the same boilerplate language? You know, I, I, I'm just, I'm just curious. And I understand where Chance is coming from, because, you know, I don't think anyone would dispute that we need to accelerate housing production. But when you just sort of dive into saying that we want to facilitate, you know, basically fast track compliance with the sixth cycle, knowing that it's an impossible number, and yet understanding that we have a requirement, it just feels like we're signing on to something that, so is there a way to not do that, but to continue to, what, I'm not using the right word, but to make sure that, you know, this isn't us, I don't know how to explain it, but it just doesn't feel right to say, yes, we're gung ho with this number, knowing that it's a really unrealistic. And it, and it creates a lot of trouble in the community. Yes, please.
My understanding is we're the only community that did not apply for the funding.
Really?
Yes. The dilemma for everybody is everyone in Marin County agrees that the numbers are crazy. Staff goes, that's just crazy. Contra Costa has the same issue. Everybody there thinks it's crazy. But the problem with crazy is you're required to update your housing element to address crazy, and you're going to have to spend all this money to go through the process. So you might as well use the money to go through the process. And ultimately, you'll see where you're at in 2023. At least that's my recommendation.
And I would just say, can I just add, you know, so, yes, it talks about accelerating housing production, which I think many of us agree we do need to do that. And compliance with implementing the sixth cycle. So our goal is to just plan for this crazy number. We don't necessarily have to build it. And so we already sent a letter to ABAAG in the fall concerned about the RENA methodology. We got back a letter basically saying, too bad. And I think we've done that. I mean, if we send this with a cover letter that says, thank you for your offer, and we're happy to do it, we still have concerns about the RENA numbers, and we could attach our old letter, if that wouldn't kick it back, could we do that? I wouldn't, I wouldn't do the same kind of letter as Mill Valley. I mean, if you're going to get the same letter back just saying, too bad, in a nice way, in a long way. But I think if, Garrett, do you think it's possible to just send this off to them with a short cover letter that says, we're hereby submitting our resolution, and we, we remain concerned as we expressed in our letter of this day with the RENA methodology and the RENA that will be assigned to the town of Fairfax, short and sweet? Can we do that?
Sure.
And as long as we're not touching the reso.
Right.
I, I don't think they're really going to pay attention to it, but at least we have another, you know, line in the sand that we think this is very.
I think, I think that's a good way to, to go at this point.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, this is Janet.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is, I have personal experience at trying to modify this resolution. It gets kicked back.
Well, we're not talking about modifying the resolution.
I think, yeah, I think your idea is a great one. As long as you leave the reso alone, you're fine.
Yeah.
So then I would just say that if we do this, we just send a short letter submitting the resolution and saying, the town of Fairfax remains concerned with the RENA methodology utilized as expressed in our letter of this date, and have concerns about the RENA to be assigned to the town of Fairfax. One sentence.
That turns out to me.
Just, or maybe you break it.
Broken.
With semi-colon.
No run-on sentences.
Yeah, compound sentence.
Semi-colon. Anyway, does that make sense for the rest of you? Just so we can move this forward?
I like it.
You're going to have to do this. And if we can use $65,000, you know, it'll cost us more than that to do it. We need to leverage as much money as we can.
Yeah, yeah. And I appreciate Chance, you, you bringing that up. And I too feel uncomfortable saying things that we don't believe. But I think if you read this carefully, it's not, it's, it's saying that this, this grant is to try to move in the direction of dealing with RENA numbers. And that's what the grant will be used for, is to move in that direction. But it doesn't say, we're going to make it, we're going to get those, those numbers, we're going to figure out how we can plan for all that housing, because it doesn't say we're going to do that. And we probably, well, I don't know what's going to happen, but those are awfully big numbers and.
But the, the language, though, Mayor, if I may, is, is, is not like we're going to try. It's to facilitate compliance to implement the sixth cycle. So I think for me, when I read it, that's what's, that's what jumped out. And I, but I understand the situation we're in, absolutely. So I think this is a good solution that Barbara came up with.
I just was looking.
Yes, sorry.
No worries. Yeah, I'm glad that y'all thought that the cover letter is accept, would be an acceptable thing to do. To just convey, I think, what a lot of the public, that consternation about those, those large numbers, you know?
Yeah. Okay, it sounds like we have consensus and we don't, do we need a motion to, we, we need to take the action of approving this resolution?
I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing application for and receipt of local planning support grant program funds and including a cover letter as outlined tonight.
Just one suggestion, if you could see if there's any public comment, and then you can.
Yes. Ah, yes. I'm sorry. Michelle, could you?
There is one member of the public left, and she is not raising her hand.
She's not raising her hand. Okay, she's just watching us score. Okay, we'll bring it back to council. And Barbara, you want to restate that motion or?
Okay, so I would like to make a motion to adopt a resolution authorizing application for and receipt of local government planning support grant program funds and including a cover letter as outlined tonight.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Kohler, second by Goddard. I'll take the roll call vote. Councilmember Cutrone?
Yes.
Councilmember Kohler?
Yeah.
Councilmember Goddard?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hellman?
Yes.
And myself, I'll vote yes. Okay. Nothing is simple. Good, good work tonight, though. So we have the, are there any reports or announcements that council members would like to make about any of our assignments? We've got that on the agenda here. Hearing none. Town managers' report, do you have anything to bring us, Garrett? Okay. Feature agenda items?
I would ask that the town manager bring to us at a meeting in the future, the irrigation plan for the redwoods in Perry Park.
That is a good point.
Which I believe he's prepared to do in a couple of months. It's rainy season right now.
It's raining now, so. Stephanie?
Yeah, I don't know if this is in the works or not, but Renee and I heard from Kaz Begley, Karen Begley of the Chamber about how we might reenact the grant, the small business grant program for COVID relief. And I wanted to revisit that. And I don't know if Garrett, you, if you have that in the works, or if that's on the agenda, plans for the agenda for the 17th. And when we are getting, I think you're on mute, but when we get, when our funds are coming in from the state related to that?
Are you referring to the state cares money, the $91,000? Or if another bill gets passed, additional funding?
Um, I don't, I'm not familiar with the $91,000.
That was the original cares package.
Oh.
Last year.
There's more funding coming, is there not?
Uh, well, it might be proposed, but grant funding to, you mean to municipalities?
Yeah.
I, that might be proposed, but I'm not aware of anything that's actually been approved at the federal level come to us at this point.
Right now, that hasn't been approved. And there are some, but I would just say, on February 15, I'm hearing the county is going to release the Small Business Grant and Loan Program that I mentioned at a earlier meeting. And that is HUD money that came through CARES Act that was allocated by the committee I sit on. And so there will be $90,000 allocated for what's called County Other. Most of the funding goes to San Rafael and to Nevada. And the last I tracked was it should be announced on February 15.
Wasn't that for rent assistance? That's not for small business?
No, there's two different programs. The Rental Assistance Program already launched. And this is the program that's, we allocated 25% of that money for the Small Business Grant and Loan Program, which will come through a nonprofit called Meta out of San Francisco. And that should be launched February 15 through 16. So as soon as I get it, I'll forward it to staff. And there's not going to be a ton of money to go around, obviously, for County Other. But I don't know if that's what you were thinking of, Stephanie?
No, it's not what I was thinking of. I was thinking of our, our local program. And I thought there was more state relief, which you can say state or federal, but I thought there was more relief funds on the way.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of any right this moment in time. It doesn't mean that there wouldn't be, depending on what gets passed at the federal level. Are you, I guess, a question is, you, we can bring back the grant program in general locally, if that's what the council wants to talk about.
Well, I don't know. I mean, this was before the shelter in place, you know, the, the first of the small business, hers in particular, because she's a hairdresser, was lifted. So this was like, what, two or three weeks ago?
She's pale.
You know, I don't, I don't know what the urgency is.
And it looks like just based on Matthew Willis's most recent presentation at the supervisors yesterday, he thinks they're going to move into the red tier soon. So that means indoor dining for a certain amount and indoor for certain things, I think, like gyms at a certain percentage. So.
Back to the red tier.
Okay.
So I think he's thinking, he was saying by middle of February. At least I watched the Board of Supervisors for that part.
Yeah.
It was, yeah, in the IJ today. May I make a quick report? Just that I think is probably important mostly for all your information is that tomorrow we will be opening the mono lot again and setting up the tables back on the same schedule. And then there'll be things to work out in terms of when the rainy days are, but we'll be storing it right there in the lot, because we've lost the space over across the street where we were storing the tables and chairs. So anyway, so those, that lot will be closed again, as it was, just exactly according to how we decided previously.
Can you remind the schedule again?
It's just Wednesday through Sunday. So Monday, Tuesday, the lot is open. And so for now, nothing, nothing's changed. I just wanted to let everyone know.
And so for now, nothing's changed. I just wanted to let everyone know.
Could you, Garrett, put out a newsletter on that? Because, you know, people get lulled into thinking things changed. I mean, I was wondering that. I'm glad you brought it up, but if you can put it out so that people are aware of it, because they may think it went away. Thank you.
Okay.
One of the things Vice Mayor Hellman, that was mentioned on a recent call with McGuire, was that the state's waiving permits, the the fees for a lot of like hairdressers and other businesses like that that were hardest hit for this year. So that's, that was something that I heard as well that'll from these folks too.
So is there a future agenda item out of that discussion?
Perhaps not, as what I'm hearing.
I don't think so, not right now.
Not right now, but we'll, we'll monitor it. Okay, thanks. Any other future agenda items or, yeah, Chance?
Just one other thing from that meeting with McGuire. I was just flipping through my notes here and it was that that five hundred million small business grant program was oversubscribed, but there's another five hundred mil on the way, apparently. So it might not be routed through the state through or through the city as far as like a grant program, but it might be like something that they can apply to in rounds. Maybe the chamber is already aware of that stuff, so that's just in my notes as well.
Thank you for taking notes.
Yeah. Okay, so it seems that it might be time to adjourn.
Adjourn in memory.
And we will adjourn in memory. That's what I'm organizing here of Joseph T. Gordon, Joe Gordon, who recently passed away as well. We're losing Fairfax in years. Okay.
Thank you.
Were there two other ones, two other, Ms. Barbara or?
Sally Tyson.
Yes, yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chance.
Yeah, so and it's also Black History Month.
Yes. So enjoy our month.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, everyone. Another late one.
Good night, everyone.
Night.
Not as late as some. Thank you all.